Thank you. We have a scout this evening. We have Alex Blackburn from Tribe 244 in Apex. For Assistant Alex, he will be so kind to lead us through the pledge of allegiance. Alex, if you could.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in Christ, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. The United States working on its citizens and citizens and we all, we met several scouts over the years that have been working on that. Near, near to each other. We have for us the consent agenda and the regular agenda. Are there any changes to the, to either of those agendas?
I would just ask that we pull out for a very brief discussion of site, continuation of site plan review SP 2016-03, Lot 964, east of this park, that item consent agenda.
And where do we put it? Old business, new business?
Well, I suppose that is old business.
Okay, we'll take that. The new item one for old business, as to the balance of the consent agenda. Does we need a motion for that?
Mayor, I'd like also to have a couple of questions on draft water shortage, if we can just add that in there just for a couple of questions.
So, we've been pulling number seven off the main agenda. That would be new business, I think. And so, let's put that in there on here. Is there a motion for both of these amendments to the consent agenda? Some move. Second, moved by Colonel Baldwin, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those ayes. That extends to the movement of those items from the consent agenda. Now, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute. Is that a?
Moved by John Bonnet, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate.
I would like to mention something. There was a change to the minutes. I think everyone had received it. Yes, we're referencing Mr. Tyler Mulligan. And while I have this opportunity, when I'm looking at the documents provided for Little Tite's daycare, I don't find enough information in that packet to enable me to make the findings of special use permit. So, I would hope that by the time it comes to the special use permit, that full documentation will be available.
And it is up for public hearing, that item number four. And I agree with Michael Leo, so with regard to that, there seems to be a dactyly or a difference in the addresses that were, that were used. I'm not sure if it's the same road or whether it is another address that is found in the, in the package. So, have that considered. So, now we're on the approval of the consent agenda, the general. We have a motion from John Bonnet, seconded by Jay Farrell. And so, we now need to vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those ayes. The motion carries. Our next item is to, to read public hearing, so if we can have a motion to go into public hearing. So, this, this will be a motion by Beth Wilson-Coley, seconded by Mike. We are going to go into public hearing. At this point, we will be guided by Jeff Jones and Victoria Bayler with respect to several public hearings. We have a sign up sheet. The first one is for the proposed annexation, public hearing. And Jeff Jones, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'll just give you another view of the request. This is a 2017, oh four, property along Thompson Street and Iron Town Road. This is the annexation map that was prepared. I was around now for Chatham Park. The request is to add 108.887 acres to the town. And as certified by the clerk, this is the result of our action.
We have no reason to object to that public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the annexation that failed to turn out in the law? Hearing done then. We're closed at public hearing. We are subject to one, which is the public hearing regarding.
The annexation line is not following exactly parcel lines, I think on two, two entrances. Down at the bottom, southeast corner, I forget where the other one is.
So, if you're looking at, that's actually a property. This, if we're looking at this one right here, this one, yeah, and maybe this one.
Yeah, there's a note that says this is not property line, this is.
Yeah.
So, that's where a cemetery is, the border of church, and that's not part of the annexation request. Chatham Park owns the property, the church will have rights to continue to have the cemetery on that property.
Southwest corner follows the existing town and boundary, not the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we're on the subject. Colonel Baldwin and I have worked on the issue of the cemetery. And I have heard from Chatham Park just recently, they have completed the survey work, and the deed is in the hands of their attorney, who will be, Chatham Park will be deeding that property to the church for continued use of that property. Next public hearing is at Thales Academy. This is discussing the perimeter buffer. Victoria Bayler, we'll be giving introductory remarks, you're first, and then we have five speakers.
Thank you. This is for, this is public hearing for the perimeter broker on site plan SP 2016, special year six, Thales Academy. Thales Academy has proposed to construct a private school along Thompson Street. The subject parcel is located in the Chatham Park PDD within 500 feet of an exterior boundary. The Chatham Park master plan states that for land uses allowed in Chatham Park that are identified as permitted by special use permit only in the town zoning ordinance, when proposed within 500 feet of a perimeter boundary shall include proposed, shall include proposed perimeter boundary transition treatments for the required site plan applications. In these cases, the town's review of the site plan and perimeter boundary transition treatments shall include a public hearing. The town of Pittsburgh zoning ordinance identifies a private school as a use which requires a special use permit, and as the proposed school site is within 500 feet of an exterior boundary, review of the site plan must include a public hearing to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on the proposed buffer. Since the Chatham Park master plan has established this requirement, staff believes, believes that the board should adopt a policy on how the town will handle such projects within 500 feet of the Chatham Park boundary. The town attorney is the author of the proposed policy, which was included in your packet. Thales Academy was required to provide three different perimeter buffers based on the uses which adjoin the Chatham Park PDD. Buffer number two, running along the eastern side of the property, requires a 10-foot semi-opague buffer, and buffer number three, along the southwest, southwest edge, requires a 20-foot semi-opague buffer. The semi-opague buffer, also known as the type B buffer, are comprised of four canopy trees for every 100 feet, 25% of which must be evergreen, and 16 shrubs for every 100 feet, 75 of which, 75% of which must be evergreen. The southwest border of the property, buffer number four, requires a 30-foot opaque buffer. This is also known as the type A buffer, and it includes four canopy trees for every 100 linear feet, 50% of which must be evergreen, and 14 evergreen understory trees for every 100 feet. Thales Academy has met the buffer requirements, and in some cases exceeded them by choosing to leave some existing vegetation in place. Staff finds that the perimeter boundary transition treatments meet the requirements of the Chatham Park master plan and landscape elements. Staff recommends sending the site plan to the plan board for review and recommendation following the public hearing.
All right. We have five people that have signed up for the, to make comments about Thales Academy's perimeter buffer. I will limit, because of the heavy agenda tonight, we are going to limit people to five, uh, three minutes to speak. If you have written comments, you're certainly welcome to give those to the clerk, Alex Lloyd. And, and so, we will, I'll let you remind you that comments are limited to the boundary and the treatment with respect to the site. First person to sign up is Michael Roach. Michael Roach.
I'm actually with Thales. I wasn't sure if I got to sign up or not, so I'll only speak if, if you guys think me too.
Would you like to be speaker at the end?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mike.
Second person to have signed up is Christopher Miller-Stewart.
I'm a consultant landscape architect at Saltmore, but Thales Academy and I hold the same position.
All right. Audrey Schmarle. Audrey.
Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you so much for, for allowing me to come and speak. I, I'm doing this very last minute. My family and I are on the eastern border of Thales Academy, the number two area there. And we just wanted to, to make, just to make the statement that we are concerned about the buffer, and maybe feels if we don't have enough information to, to really speak tonight about our preferences for a buffer. But some of the things that we're concerned about are having a buffer between the school and us that would prevent people from coming onto the property. Our property is, is basically a hundred acres of wooded property. And, you know, there's just the fear that people, kids might be coming onto the property without permission and possibly doing some damage, smoking, whatever, causing a fire. And what kind of buffer is going to be important to have in place in order to prevent that? We're also concerned about wildlife being able to travel freely between our land and, and Thales Academy land. So, you know, is, is a fence a good idea? Could wildlife be able to get over the fence in order to, to get onto our property? And also, as far as stormwater, my husband and I met with Robin Rose of Chatham Parks Incorporated this week, and we had a wonderful conversation with him. And he is very committed to making sure that, that we're happy, that, that things are done in a very deliberate way to preserve what's around Thales and what's around our property. And I don't want to make that seem any less. I just want to put, get it publicly out there that we, we're concerned about the border there. He says that there will be a 30-foot buffer between us and Thales, and that, that Chatham Park is committed to having 30-foot buffers between them and, and other areas as, as a general rule. Will that include clearing trees? We're concerned about trees. We'd like to keep trees in place, but we'd also like to have stormwater be going in the right direction, too. So, but we're just here to, to express that, that we do care about the border there, and we have some concerns, and maybe don't have enough information to, to make a, a good statement on it tonight. But thank you for all the work that you're doing. We appreciate it. And Beth, thank you so much for your concern for the trees. We're concerned also for that trees. Bye. Thank you.
And Audrey Schmarle, let me just say that, that we'll be glad to give you, if you don't have already, maps and things like that, if Robin didn't give you those, so that you can take a look at that, and then perhaps be, get plenty of, could ask where to go from here. It'll be taken to the thing.
All right. Thank you so much.
Audrey, can I ask one question?
Yes.
And I want to make sure I understood. Did you say that Robin said that it would be a 30-foot buffer?
He did indicate that, that Chatham Park is committed to having 30-foot buffers. And maybe I misunderstood. I, I'm not going to say that, that he, that I know for a fact that everywhere is going to be a 30-foot buffer. But as far as our land on, on that side, on the eastern side of Chatham Park needing our land, he said it would be a 30-foot buffer.
And is Liz Collington here?
Yes, she is.
She's next on the list.
I just got to say, after you've kind of taken a look at it, can you drop us a few notes about how you feel about it? And if the rest of you can touch on that.
After looking at all the maps that are available, we will. Thank you very much.
I don't need to pay anything. I signed up in case, if you ran out of time, I could pay mine to her.
Thank you. Liz Collington?
I want to take all my three minutes, and I'd like to flip them over to the alternative, the additional elements hearing part. I just wanted to say that I wondered if the town board could maybe reserve the right to ask Chatham Park to come back and send certain areas if as, develop the whole subdivision, not just Thales, but, you know, other areas that may cause serious problems to the neighbors that maybe additional buffering in the form of fencing or something else, maybe not landscaping, but something could be done. That's all I want to say. Oh, my, my name is Liz Collington. I live at 39 Rocky Hills Road, Pittsburgh. Sorry.
Yeah. Thank you. Michael Roach, Christopher Miller-Stewart, and Audrey, do you wish to respond in any way to comments from the meeting? Okay. Hearing done then. We'll move to the next public hearing.
Let me mention a couple of things. I found it a little difficult to truly understand this plan. And I wasn't sure if the dashed line, figure, you know, gray ash line was the boundary. I wasn't sure of that. And it would be really helpful, I think, when folks can speak, when they say, I live here, that the map shows, not the house, but it does project on, identifies it to a pretty typical site standing type of things. It would also be very helpful to know those elements of all the, whatever. I know I researched that myself, but if you ask, you know, that, but it'd be really helpful documentation of here. So, I would just ask that that information be provided by the time it ends up from the board.
And the, on the site plan, the property, the adjoining property owner's names are on the site?
Well, then, maybe just include that sheet in this set.
Okay. I mean, just the landscape stuff. Yes, this is just the landscape on the normal site plan, everything.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure it's a matter of hitting a couple of layers, and that information would magically appear.
Yeah.
It would be really helpful, so.
All right. Next, we have Chatham Park's master plan, the next amendment. This is the third set of elements, including public art, public facilities, transit, and affordable housing. And Jeff Jones will be introducing it, and we have five people signed up for public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. 100% for you. Tonight, we're going to go over our last set of additional elements. Back on May 22 of this year, the additional elements committee presented their recommendations to you all on the third set, including public art, public facilities, transit, transit, and affordable housing. As part of that, uh, part of the review of the elements, we must all have public hearing, that's what we all need to do tonight. And we're going to first hear from staff, then we'll hear from the public, and then if the applicant would like to make any comments as well. What we're trying to do is get all the comments to the applicant that would be generated by the public and staff and the board and others before they start making serious edits to these particular elements. That's sort of in the protocol that we've put on in the past, and we'll, we'll forward. The applicant hearing tonight is we'll go to the planning board for their consideration at their September meeting, and then obviously the October, November, if we need to elongate that out. Attached to the packet that you received was comments that were generated by the additional elements committee, Chatham Parks Council, Chatham County Habitat for Humanity, and other comments that we had received during the process from May of 2016 up until the packets went out to you all. In this particular set of elements, staff's comments compare with those of the additional elements committee, so at this point, there's not additional staff comments. There will be much more discussion that has to occur on the affordable housing element. Staff thought that it was just not, we just didn't need to go into that this was a deficient element, and we think need to do a little bit more. We will be giving them guidance, and you all guidance, on how to respond to the affordable housing element as we go through this process. That particular element may be one that is taken out of the cycle and is talked about for more months to come, where you all may get to a point where the other three elements are satisfactory, and you're ready to move forward with those. But I think we all and the applicant understand that affordable housing is something that's going to take a little bit more community discussion outside of just a couple of hearings and, and meetings with the town board. So, with that, you can hold a public hearing, and staff can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. First person to sign up is Renee Castle, Chatham County Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners. Early on, the Commissioners requested that staff attend the additional elements discussion related to affordable housing, open space, phasing, and public facilities. We attended the meeting to review the plans submitted by the developer and developed recommendations that were approved by the Board of Commissioners on May 20. As, as you know, these are issues from a county perspective. We previously provided input on open space, the open space and phasing elements, as well as requested that the sedimentation erosion control ordinances and rules not be part of the regulations that are held constant throughout the duration of the project, since those change according to state law. So, I will provide the recommendations from the county on the affordable housing and public facilities and transit elements. So, first, affordable housing. As you know, the county and town are already working together on affordable housing. My understanding from the town manager, you will receive a detailed set of recommendations on affordable rental housing at an upcoming meeting. I think you've already had a preview of those. In addition, the town and county have agreed to contract with Triangle J this year to continue our work and develop recommendations for affordable housing more generally. The county recommends a stronger commitment by the developer to affordable housing, including increasing percentage, the percentage of affordable housing within the development. In addition, it offers a strong opportunity for affordable rental and workforce housing, and we ask these concepts to be explored. The county also supports the concept of dedicated funding source, including the developer's proposed contribution to support affordable housing throughout the county. And the county is already a partner with the town in this effort, and we welcome the opportunity to work with the developer on the issue. Regarding public facilities, we have several recommendations there. For infrastructure, the county recommends that Chatham Park take every measure possible to ensure adequate water pressure and supply, especially with regard to fire and rescue efforts. Regarding public safety facilities, the county recommends that Chatham Park donate separate parcels of land as needed to accommodate EMS and fire service. For school facilities, the county strongly supports Chatham County's requirements for school sites and supports the process outlined for conveyance of site by the Chatham County Board of Education. The county supports the developer's proposal to donate the sites. The county requests that requirements for facility sharing, such as shared parking between schools and parks, be mutually acceptable to all parties and be determined on a case-by-case basis. The county also supports Chatham Park's efforts to improve traffic flow on 15501 by constructing an additional access road into Northwood High School. Regarding libraries, the county supports our library advisory committee, committee's recommendation to explore how library services can be provided to residents of Chatham Park. With regard to vertical assets, the county requests that the town and developer allow co-location of emergency communication equipment on all vertical assets constructed within the development, such as water tanks, as we are starting a project to replace our emergency communication system that will equally benefit the town. Regarding transportation, Chatham County supports the provision of transit services within Chatham Park. The county requests that Chatham Transit Network be given the first opportunity to provide service before other providers. The county supports construction of bus stops with sheltered routes within the development. And we, we also ask Chatham Park to consider other employment routes for Chatham Park residents, as such as those working at UNC or in RTV. Thank you very much for my use.
Thank you very much. The next speaker signed up is Leslie Landis.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Leslie Landis. I live at 21 Randolph Court in Pittsburgh. I speak today as an individual citizen of Pittsburgh and not as any board member that I'm a, a member of. Events of, I'm talking about public art, too. Events of the last few days have shown the vital importance of a thoughtful and intentional methodology for the selection, placement, and review of relevant public art that tells an accurate story. With Chatham Park and the inevitable growth of Pittsburgh, there will be hundreds of opportunities to recognize through public art the people, places, and moments that made this town a place that Chatham Park investors wanted to invest in and build in. A thoughtful public art program can enhance that investment. Successful public art names and celebrates our town's history and the indigenous people, pioneers, and everyday unsung heroes of our past and present. Successful public art engages and educates residents and visitors about geologic formations and the waterways that make Chatham County such a beautiful place. Successful public art can increase community dialogue, enhance tourism, and expand economic opportunities. Because good public art tells a community story, it reminds residents and visitors alike what makes a place unique. No other place has Pittsburgh's story. Public art boosts the quality of life for citizens by providing a sense of place, enhancing a community's pride, and enlivening the visual quality of the built environment. Yesterday's statues, sculptures, and murals have grown into an expanded range of projects for public artists. Today, public artists are part of the design teams for transit systems and highway structures and streetscapes and community buildings, among many others. Fortunately, local resources are here for use. Fortunately, local resources are here for use by Chatham Park investors to tell the story of this remarkable place that they have bought into. I ask that they engage the Chatham Historical Association, the Chatham Arts Council, the Chatham Artist Guild, NC State School of Design, and the North Carolina Arts Council to learn about the people, places, and moments that make this place so special. Pittsburgh has had some successes with public art. We've also had some failures. We can do better, and Chatham Park can do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lisa, you have your, what you just said on email.
I can send it to you.
Yes, please.
Thank you all. Well done.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Here, can I have Liz Collington?
My name is Liz Collington, 390 Rocky Hills Road, Pittsburgh. I'm also submitting written comments on additional problems that go for these elements, which I've got some time to address, all of them here. Regarding the transit elements, which is really more about roads, this should be used to correct a problem in the already approved parking element, and that is pedestrian connectivity. The parking element says that in the section about pedestrian connectivity for Chatham Park, that they only have to provide for safe pedestrian passage from a parking lot to a building for motorists. True multimodal transportation means providing complete pedestrian access, not just sidewalks, but safe, dedicated access for people arriving at or passing through or by a parking lot on foot. The lack of this requirement makes mockery of the concept of a walkable community, which is one of the main justifications for committing such high density. It's also discriminatory. Traffic impact analyses should cover all the routes that the extra traffic would use. For instance, right now, the arbitrary one-quarter mile limit wouldn't even cover the entire length of an affected road necessarily, as if vehicles are going to vaporize outside of that radius. These analyses must also assume some people will use alternate routes, sometimes on streets or roads not designed for significant increase in traffic. The master plan does not limit the scope of the TIA to a quarter-mile radius, so that artificial limit ought to be deleted. The Towns Review Committee recommends that transportation design not create isolated communities, and this element should be amended to ensure maximum connectivity for motorists as well as pedestrians. Looking at the section plans in the small area plan, the road and housing layout are designed to avoid the extra expense of bridges. The environmental value of avoiding street crossings seems questionable in a development that poses far greater and more longer-term impacts. People are going to have to drive unnecessarily to access their local playground, and emergency response times, I fear, are going to be much longer than necessary. Regarding the public art element, three things concern me most in the public art element. Unlike the public art requirements of other jurisdictions, developers would not be required to install or fund art based on the construction cost for some civil basis. Secondly, the proposed public art committee would have at most just one member who's not on the payroll at Chatham Park. And as this is written, maybe not even that. Thirdly, the things that can qualify as art are too broad, such as architectural features, fanciful infrastructure designs, and so on, like a pattern in the paving. The proposed external funding mechanism through grants is totally inadequate and unrealistic because that would not necessarily cover ongoing maintenance, insurance, or even the cost of grant application writing. It also shouldn't be just up to Chatham Park people to decide what can substitute on a site for the purchase and installation of an outdoor art piece.
Liz, excuse me. Our, with the time limitation, if you've got written comment, we'd love to receive those.
Why don't you be very long to get through this? I mean, there are four elements. I'm submitting more detailed comments on that, but I'd like to point out that if neither Chatham Park investors or the developers are going to pay for public art, then they don't get to say where it should go on a public property. And there's nothing in the master plan that limits the public art provisions to be only what Chatham Park wants them to be. Regarding affordable housing, part of the rationale for Chatham Park and its many exemptions was that it would be a lift-work-play community. Well, then, it needs to be for people of all income levels, and we know that in the U.S., currently, most new jobs are being created at the lower-income level, and that wages are not rising. Pittsburgh and Chatham generally have many areas of, from crisis-level deficit in housing that is affordable at every level, rental and purchase. It's hard to say what shocked me most about Chatham Park's insulting the Affordable Housing Plan. The required amount is so small, it's virtually hard to see without a magnifying glass, totally inadequate, purely nominal, the natural contribution, or the loophole by which other affordable housing products can be credited towards those minimal requirements, even though they could be very remote from amenities, jobs, shopping, et cetera, and not even on Chatham Park property. I don't know why I have to keep saying this, but anything that's not spelled out in the master plan doesn't have to be negotiated with Chatham Park if what they propose is unacceptable. The town board can still be developing an affordable housing plan and tell Chatham Park they can go along with it, or they're stuck with their current development camp. They need your approval to build a housing that would support the non-residential allowance. And I would recommend that that development camp not be lifted until there is an affordable housing plan in place. Otherwise, there's no leverage to get them to agree to what you want. I pretty much agree with what the review committee laid out and their recommendations, but in addition, it's extremely important that specific sites for adequate quantity of affordable housing units of all kinds be identified as early as possible and no later than an approved small area plan. There are multiple instances from around the country and as close as Cary where local residents have successfully blocked or delayed various kinds of more affordable housing anywhere near pre-existing neighborhoods. It would be far better to have plans in place, not just before those residents arrive, but before the home builders arrive as well. Regarding public facilities, special scrutiny and a lot of editing are needed for this element because it dictates what the town must do, not what Chatham Park must do, and that we prioritize town spending towards future Chatham Park development over current or future other town needs outside of Chatham Park, either directly or through the higher density. It would take far too long to list those instances, so I'm giving you 10 pages in writing. I would have thought that anything that Chatham Park needs the town to agree to do should be negotiated in a development agreement. None of those things that are currently in this element appear to be appropriate, and I doubt that they are necessarily what the board would want, either in the element or the development agreement. The element also backtracks on the original commitment regarding use of reclaimed water wherever permitted, to now only where practical. In fact, it turns out that the original estimates of drinking water demand assumes not only total penetration of reclaimed water use for non-residential construction, but that it also would be allowed in future residential construction. In addition, if there is no reclaimed water tank until the so-called north village is built out, then the drinking water demand is going to be way in excess of that in previous or even current estimates. That could mean we need to expand the water plant much sooner. This delay is also in conflict with other statements in this element that an overarching goal will be to maximize the conservation and reuse of water resources. The element also opens the door to possibly privatize water supply to Chatham Park. This would mean the town selling water at a lower bulk rate and not getting the expected retail water revenues that would be needed for infrastructure improvements, including a new plant and lines for Jordan Lake Water. Of course, Chatham Park investors and their developers would like to have schools sited inside their neighborhoods. It's a great real estate marketing tool, but if school assignment is based on proximity, we could end up with an imbalance in our school system. In the element, the school board gets offered sites with no choice of sites, and I imagine too little time to use them effectively. Regarding parks, the element cites national guidelines for location and size for different types of park, but then doesn't require that they be, then the element does not require that those guidelines be used. In fact, this element would allow the inadequate parkland provided, it would allow the inadequate parkland provided in the small area plan, allow parks to be elsewhere, inside or outside of Chatham Park, and not even on Chatham Park property. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Donna Farva? Oops.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm speaking about the affordable housing additional element on behalf of Chatham Habitat for Humanity. Our executive director, Jerry Warden, could not be here to 90 cents his regrets, but he has already sent you specific recommendations. I just want to highlight a couple of things. It's great to hear that there's a concern about this issue enough to really give it close attention and more attention. We feel very strongly at Chatham Habitat that's needed. This is really critical for the future of Pittsburgh and Chatham County. I also want to highlight the work that's happening within the county that you're already aware of, and encourage consistency between Pittsburgh, the county, the towns, et cetera. The comprehensive plan has some information about housing needs to be increased, hopefully. And the Chatham County Housing Committee has been meeting with Triangle J facilitating, I believe, and they've put out some good information, too. It's a critical issue. We see it every day, but it's growing. It's not just people who are working that can't afford housing, it's seniors, it's a wide range of the population, it's increasing number. And I just want to point out that there are multiple definitions of affordable housing. It's not just percentage of area median income, that's one way to look at it, but it's also people who are paying more than 30% of their gross monthly household income towards housing. And my, our biggest concern is not just the people who are at 80 to 100% of area median income, but the people who are below that and housing that can address that in Pittsburgh, but also in Chatham Park. So we really want the town and the Commissioners to look at that much more closely, see what's possible. There are lots of ideas out there. There are different things being done in different places. We'd love to be part of that dialogue, and we just are appreciative of the town giving a lot of really careful thought to this. We'd love to talk more.
Can I ask you to repeat that last point, please, just after you said the 30%?
There are multiple definitions of affordable housing. It's not just if it's 80% or less of area median income, but it's also people that pay more than 30% of their gross monthly household income towards housing. So our concern is that we're not building housing for, maybe we're building housing for people who are making 80% of area median income, but there's very little housing being built for anyone that could afford something less than that. So that really needs a lot more close attention and strategies. I just want to reiterate one other point, which is that having a dedicated funding source, we feel, is really important. Doesn't have to go to Chatham Habitat, it just needs to go towards affordable housing. The county is doing a lot of work, along with the towns, with looking at affordable rental, which is a critical need as well. So it's a wide need, much, much larger than any one organization. And so we're supportive of the general effort. We'd like to be part of it, but we see there's a much greater need than, than just one organization can address.
What is the average median income of folks for which Habitat provided for working with the?
So Habitat works with people making 25 to 60% of area median income. So the area median income for Chatham County, because it's in the triangle area, is over $70,000 right now. So there's a lot of people who wish they were making, you know, just the average that aren't, and so can't afford housing presently.
When you're qualifying folks for the program, you're also termed in that they can afford 30% of their income going towards housing?
Right. So we adjust it. Like, if someone is closer to the bottom end of that, then we'll extend the mortgage longer. Sometimes we'll do a silent second, which means, like, if they're really on the low part of the scale, which means they only pay that, like, if they sell their house. So it's, like, it's not a gift, but it makes it possible for them to still stay within that 30%. So we'll, we'll sometimes use very creative things to address that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are the speakers who have signed up for this, these public hearings that we have just, just had. Is there anything to add, Mr. Jones, on this matter?
Not unless there's questions from staff, and obviously, if you want the applicant to come up, give any words, but I'm sure that they've heard a lot tonight and will be responding to comments that have been received so far and what we've received tonight. So it's up to the board. I'll hear from that.
If we have no further questions for Jeff Jones, then if there are motions to go out of the public hearing. Move by Michael Dioco, second of Habitat Wilson Foley, those can take a brief interview by Dean Hahn. Those are the production hearings. Our next matter is citizen matter, of expression speakers who are limited to three minutes. You welcome comments and writings to the record, and when you rise to speak, please state your names and address. We have, and I've signed up Dennis Hearn.
Nick, my name's Dennis Hearn. I have a house at Hearn Road, which is close to mine. The old water line system used to run across our property to, in the '60s, the line that was put in was had a quick, well, six houses. Now there's 26, 30 houses on our property. Plus the toilet, you don't, you can't turn water on to wash your hands. The water pressure is not there. I just want to put on this to you, so you can look it up, and maybe I can come back September 25th to give you a little more information and give you time to find out what's there. We have a lot of issues with the water pressure on the part that my house is in.
Very good. We'll ask our engineer to, to research that, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Hearn.
And what is your address, sir?
It's at 177 Hearn Road.
Thank you. Very good. Thanks, sir. Randy Bowler.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. My name is Randy Bowler. I reside at 21 Randolph Court. Tonight, I have three quick items I'd like the board to consider. Number one, strategic land banking. Once again, I commend the town on its purchase of the old Piggly Wiggly Building on Salisbury Street. Since the town closed escrow on this property last month, it has become obvious how important this parcel will become to the town and its businesses. Visitors are utilizing the parking facilities, which have led to an increase in business downtown, and given this early success, I hope the town will consider further partnerships to purchase property for the public good. For example, there is a parcel for sale adjacent to Town Hall. The town should explore the viability of purchasing this parcel and combining it with its current site. With the development of Chatham Park on this side of town, this parcel might be useful as a park and/or green space. Certainly, such consideration would be favored by the public at large, especially given the potential outcry the development of a Sheetz gas station will engender on the old Ford Motor Lot that had been vacant and underutilized for years. Imagine if this lot had been purchased by the town and or county years ago for an arts center, a public parking deck, and/or a new location for the central offices of our school system. Item number two. My second item is a request for the town to pass a resolution honoring the life of Charles Wilbur Bryant. Wilbur, as he was known, died on June 16th. He was a fixture in Chatham County and a friend of everyone who knew him. His sister, Margaret Pollard, died while I was mayor, and we honored her with a resolution. Wilbur, as you know, was an asset to the community. He brought disparate groups together regardless of race, class, or creed, and he served the community on a variety of public and private boards during his life. I believe honoring Wilbur is in the spirit of Chatham County and Pittsburgh, and I sincerely hope the town board will take such action this fall. Item number three. My final item relates to a particular and notable monument that prominently sits in front of our historic courthouse and at the intersection of crossroads of US 64 and 15501. I was not intending to bring this up tonight, but the tragic events this past weekend in Charlottesville, Virginia, the protests on Sunday in Pittsburgh in front of the monument, and the national discussion- about the Confederate monument and whether the town and/or county would take actions to move it and/or remove it. Naturally, when the courthouse burned, a lot of people asked about the status of the monument. Of course, it survived quite well while the courthouse kind of cratered. There were also members of the community at large who wanted to avoid the conflict of such actions and others who venerated the monument itself and what it represented. The quiet debate was always a second-tier item behind fixing the water and sewer system, improving our parks, addressing economic vitality in our downtown, and planning for future growth, the items that we always deal with when you are a town. The last time we had an uptick in energy to remove and remove the monument was in the aftermath of the horrific shootings at the AME Zion Church in Charleston, South Carolina. The actions of the white supremacist Dylan Ruth led to a lot of changes around the country regarding monuments and monumentation, including the removal of a noted and controversial flag from the State House in South Carolina by its governor. The reaction from our General Assembly was a law restricting the ability of local communities to take local action and handle monuments in a way, shape, and form that the community saw fit. At this point, I believe the community must take action and the town of Pittsburgh must send a resolution to the Chatham County Commissioners requesting that a community process be created to move the monument to a more suitable location and replace it with something more unifying, more positive, and more affirming of the Pittsburgh and Chatham County of 2017 as opposed to 1909. Now, to be clear, I'm a student of history and I am not advocating for the erasure of history nor its sanitizing. I'm a firm believer in all of the rights delineated in our Constitution and enumerated in the Bill of Rights and subsequent amendments. Free speech and the right of free assembly are two cornerstones of our democracy that were deemed so important that they were stipulated in the First Amendment and appear before the much-bolished and debated Second Amendment. I say this to avoid confusion and conflation on the matter. I will defend all citizens' rights to free expression, thought, and access to free assembly.
Mr. Bowler, if you wind up, please.
It's all on my own stuff. However, when we are considering the iconography and monumentation that appear prominently in our public square, representing in some way, shape, or form the dreams and aspirations of the community, we can and should take the time to reflect whether such monuments represent the community of ours and whether it is time to consider a change. The rest of the comments I'll send to the Board. I'm not here to lecture you on this matter. I'm only bringing it up in the context of time. While we were meeting, my wife showed me a periscope that a riot or something has occurred in Durham and they've torn down a monument. So I'm bringing this up that I think it's time that we might take action so that we can avoid such displays and find a reasonable course of action in regards to this particular monument. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cabal Reagan.
Hello. I'm Cabal Reagan. I live at 365 Thompson Street. I wanted to speak as to the agenda item coming up later concerning rezoning on the Sonic Street. Is that a permissible thing to talk about? I don't want to offend anyone by talking about something I should not be talking about.
Sometimes we have to have a rule that one shall not speak on agenda items. However, first of all, good pleasure, Gordon. Could you submit your writing, your comments and writings, and that would help us to understand, well, of course, that would presume that the matter would not go forward if we didn't have.
That's correct. Let me talk in general principle then. I think the historic character of, of this town is the most important asset. I think you have the historic district, you have property on the National Register, historic places, and the town should keep close watch on developments that will affect the historic district, that will affect the, that will affect properties on the National Register. The quality and character of this town is vested with you all, and I don't think that this Board should ever abrogate that responsibility by, by just saying let somebody else make the decision. As such, I would encourage you all to really look at the historic character of this town and to preserve it and maintain it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ellen Brooks.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Commissioner. Ellen Brooks, and I live at 66 Noe Street. I respectfully ask the Board to take away the privilege given to our Town Manager to spend up to a half of a million dollars at his discretion on an informal bid item, and for the Board to vote on every expense greater than $15,000. In addition, our Town Manager works at the pleasure of the Board and can be dismissed at any time without cause. I've been informed and most of the people in the town know that the town has spent $9,000 on a 1.2 acre lot in downtown Pittsburgh, plus closing costs of $8,830.41. I was informed of this by the town and found out only today by the County Manager that that was incorrect and that the, the cost was divided by the county and the town. I was also apprised by the town that the Pittsburgh Vision Plan was paid, was paid for by North Carolina Department of Transportation. That is inaccurate. The Pittsburgh Vision Plan was paid for by the Preston Development Company. Back to that $900,000 lot, that, the 2017 appraised value of that lot is $347,345. That is $550,000 difference. I've heard the Habitat, I've heard Mr. Bowler speak to the, to the needs of our town. We are 20% of our town's citizens that live at, at or below poverty level. That is 800 people. I challenge any of us to look those 800 people in the eye and tell them that we think it's fun if we build an $11 million town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Brooks.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor and Board, for their service. A few comments. First, I think that, I feel sorry for you. You're about to enter the most, you already have. Obviously, it's not the most challenging period that any Town Board has ever had to face in this town's history. And I know a bit about that. I heard some things tonight. Oh, well. Let's talk a little bit about citizens and your relationship to them. Every day that goes by, I sense a growing gulf between the people of this town and its governing board. I don't say that in social terms, you've got a lot to do. Well, let's talk a little bit about why, I mean, people, man said to me today, his family's been here for five generations. I can't wait to move. I want to get away from here. I cannot stand the taxes and all the rules and regulations that are being heaped upon us by both the county and the town. Two days ago, another man said that to me. I don't know what to say to him, I just listened. But you hear that. I don't know whether you hear it, but I do. And let's talk about your responsibilities a little bit. We'll go back to a time even before I was in school, 1215. The Magna Carta, Dr. Albert Koats, that founded the Institute of Gov, now School of Gov, said if he had to put his finger on where our rights began, it began with the Magna Carta. And one of the things the Magna Carta, a great charter did, was it took the power away from the king to put power, to get the taxes on people and to spend money. It said that the wealthy had to do that. And over the years in England and later in America, that's been expanded until all of us get to choose who our representatives are that are going to determine our taxes and determine how they will be spent. I'm a retired teacher and retired from several other things. I'm 78 years old. Last year, I could not pay my property taxes at one time. I had to pull it out of savings. Thank God I have it. But what about those people that don't? As Ellen said, there are a lot of people in this town struggling to make it, and they pay taxes too. You might be surprised at how many people who live in a modest home own it and have to pay taxes on it. And if they rent, that's passed on to them by the owners of the property. And taxes now take up a lot, I don't mind telling you, I'm pretty much a public rep. I think my property taxes were approximately $2,000. By the way, I didn't give my address. I live at 66 Noe Street here in Pittsburgh, a couple of blocks from here. It's an older community. My house was built in 1928. But what about this power that you have to raise and spend money? I think next Chief Crutchfield's responsibility to protect us and keep us safe, this power of the purse is the most important power you have, that power of the purse, that power to raise and spend money. And I could go into some of the things that have been spent, both in the county and in the town. But I wonder, how many of you live in a house that's fine as a new courthouse? And I promise I'll stop calling it Tataras Mahal if it might fit. I didn't know the other day, I missed the school buses, but I didn't know where they were. They're hidden in the woods out there near the doghouse, or animal control, excuse me. Eight billion dollars, I'm told, is spent on it there. County bought the old SunTrust building the other day. And I just don't think the people of this town are ready. If I understood what I read from you, these 3,100 boats, 1,600 households, approximately 4,000 people, I don't think they are, really won't spend $12 billion on a parking facility and a new town hall. When this town hall was purchased from Carolina Power and Light, I believe it's altogether six acres. It goes all the way to this little creek down here. Couldn't you add on to this building? I got a quick solution to your space problem. Get rid of some people. About that. Do we really need a Parks Manager for a pit's park? I've got cracked sidewalks, I mean, excuse me, cracked pavement. I see water meters covered up with dirt. I see a lot of just basic infrastructure things. I know what the water's like here, and you do too. We got water and sewer and street problems. We need to take care of infrastructure first, and we need to worry about the people that are already here as much or more as those that are coming, with all due respect. At least that's the way I feel, and many of my fellow citizens feel that way. I've probably used more of my time than I'm supposed to. This is what Pittsburgh paper a few years ago, it's called Local Government in North Carolina. And it was written so that a middle school child could understand it and distributed it all across this state. If you read about it, what we're supposed to do as a town, and you think about us coming together, you need to have neighborhood meetings. You need to take advantage of everything that technology offers and also traditional ways. Just see, you find out what do people want? How do they want their money spent? Now, I know that you've put articles in the paper and that we have Facebook and all that, but the citizens, you have a responsibility, and they have one, to come together and decide what it is that we want to spend money on. And with that, I'll close, but I want, I would like to, since I'm an old retired history teacher, let me quote a famous Supreme Court decision. McCulloch versus Maryland, I believe, early 1800s landmark decision, the Supreme Court ruled, and we've got several attorneys here that could correct me if I'm wrong, that the power that tax is basically the power also to destroy, destroy initiative and hope and many other good things, as well as do some really good things for our citizens. Thank you.
Gina Brooks, refresh my recollection, how many years did you sit on this floor, sir?
25 years, and they weren't all so much fun either.
Liz Collington, will you, have you signed up for public expression? I'm living in, we need to make this a lot quicker than the last one. Over.
My name's Liz Collington, and I live on 390 Rock Hills Road in Pittsburgh. I saw the ad in the most recent Chatham Register this afternoon, placed by Mr. Brooks and his wife, and I thought it was somewhat misleading. It implied that there was no fiscal oversight by the Board, and I feel that that's entirely wrong. The Board is kept informed, and I see no mismanagement, no irresponsibility, and absolutely no reason to try to call item off with pitchforks. In addition, I'd like to say that I attend virtually every Town Board meeting and read many of the documents in the agenda package, just for the reason to ensure Pittsburgh taxpayers don't subsidize Chatham Park or other new developments at the expense of cracked sidewalks in the rest of town. My impression is that the town and its budget and finances are being managed extremely well and extremely cautiously. Manager and staff appear to be doing wonders with very little to work with. We do have budget hearings that people can attend if they are concerned about what money is being spent on. But I'm particularly upset at the inference of malfeasance by the Town Manager. I feel that is absolutely disgraceful. And now the Parks Manager, he's gone. I mean, I'm just appalled. Thank you.
Mary Phyllis Horn.
I live at Creekside Apartments, number 24 here in Pittsburgh. I'm here to talk about that because I've been here since 1995, and I have loved that particular project over there. I've loved living there. I felt like this is, this Pittsburgh is my home like no place else I have ever lived, including where I grew up. And it was very well managed with Virginia White and her husband while the original owner was there. He sold to Mr. Freeman in the late 90s someplace. And Mr. Freeman brought in Harry Blackwell, who did a superb job of both management and maintenance and bringing in repairs. He treated us equally, equal citizens. The past five years... including where I grew up. And it was very well managed with Virginia White and her husband while the original owner was there. He sold to Mr. Freeman in the late nineties someplace. And Mr. Freeman brought in Harry Blackwell, who did a superb job of both management and maintenance and bringing in repairs. He treated us equally, equal citizens. The past five years since Harry left has started to downgrade, and the past three years since we've had a new manager who started out by being a verbal bully to everybody and lying most of the time. The maintenance has gone down the tubes, and we have formed an association. I'm going to talk on behalf of several people who couldn't be here tonight. One of them is Jim Henkley. This is what he found when he moved in in twenty thirteen. A filthy stained carpeting that is still in place. It's torn and ripped, never been repaired, even though he has frequently asked for repairs. A ceiling, and he gave me part of the ceiling that has fallen down in three places, in his living room and another place in his office, including some water coming through and causing that. Bathroom drains need repair, sliding door won't open all the way, uneven front walk isn't actually repaired, and he's very nervous because he is not easy on his feet. He has to use a walker, and the walk is always scary to him. Front door and the address need to be painted. He has called many times over the past five years. Another person who couldn't be here tonight is Judy Wicks. Oh, my gosh, okay. Well, here it is, okay. Judy Wicks can't be here. She lives at Creekside also. She said there is lint in the dryer vent and also in a bedroom vent that keeps cool air from coming in. There's mold and mildew on walls of the porch, ivy climbing over rocks, and outside walls by the porch with no spraying of that. There are two windows that will not close all the way. The sliding door of the patio is very hard to open and close. The deck needs treating. The yard maintenance should be taking care of pine cones and needles need to be removed. The kitchen sink spigot needs to be replaced. None of these have been done. She's mentioned about the dryer vent. There are at least six or seven of us have a dryer, a closed dryer. And we, I was told when I went in in twenty, oh, four years ago, just four years ago it went in, I was told it should be cleaned out once a year. So I asked the maintenance. Maintenance said, no, it doesn't need to be. We are finding out now from what Judy has said, from Archie, who had this wonderful appliance store here for many years, that he said this is a fire hazard. Hillary will probably talk about some of the people she has talked about, she's consulted on this. We are afraid of fire there. If even one of those catches fire, a whole building could blow up in flames, could catch the pine trees, could catch the pine cones, the needles, the whole complex would be in danger. We have sent, and that's my primary concern, two of my repairs I've had on the dock that are almost a month were repaired this afternoon. And they have promised to find a tool, something to blow out the lint from the fire, from, I'm sorry, from the dryer up through the vent, the ducts up to the vent, clearing that out. The maintenance man said he's going to try to find a machine for this. We hope that is true. We have done many things. We sent a letter to Mr. Freeman Company, our association sent that on Wednesday this past week. Friday, the maintenance were there, and everything he said alluded to the fact that he had heard about this. I got the receipt back on Saturday, and the maintenance have been doing a lot with my apartment. They've been doing something with another person's apartment, Bill, I'm only allowed to say his name. When Zach Taylor was with us several weeks ago, he went out on to Bill's deck, leaned against the railing, and nearly, it caved out and nearly fell off. That's the head of the properties. His steps are a mess. He has difficulty going up and down. He has been asking for repairs for almost a year. They have finally been done in this past week, except for the deck and his steps. Somebody else has experienced the same thing. Jim Henkley has not had any repairs done, even though he's been asked constantly. Many people have been describing windows that either will not open, will not close, they may fall out, they start to come up, and you bring them up. And some of them are so coated with moisture that they're almost, you can't see anything out of it. We don't know where else to go. We thought of suing, getting legal aid, and suing the Prestige Management or Mr. Freeman. We're not sure what we can do about this. I hope you can help us. I'm going to say just a few more things. Some more walkways, some other people have been talking about walkways. But I'd like for you to know, I still love the landscaping. I love those tall trees. I love those rocks. The architecture is unique. I finally feel like I'm living in a home, only part of my bedroom wall and part of my office wall above my next door neighbor. The rest of it is free. I can get up at two o'clock in the morning and go play my piano, and nobody is bothered by it. I love this place. I would love to stay here, but I don't feel like we are being respected. I feel like all they're doing is trying to keep the air, the heat, the roof, and the water, and the rest of it, mm, don't do anything. I could say a lot more, but I would like to leave with four pages from the original document I got when I moved here in nineteen ninety-five, which says repairs shall be made. They went through and they, the maintenance person went through quarterly basis, checking the internal part of the house to see everything was okay, and making repairs. That's no longer being done. I have a lot of pictures here to show you that this apartment, the complex, has not been painted in over ten years. When Harry was here, he and his cousins painted it at least every five years. It is, there's a lot of damage on it, and I don't know where it's going from here.
Mary Phyllis, perhaps we can give you some information regarding an appropriate, you know, someone to take a look at code violations and things like that? Why don't we ask our town attorneys if they could give you any direction on that?
Okay. I think Hillary's going to talk about some of that. Hillary, aren't you planning to talk about some of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. That's your stealing?
My name is Hillary Pellegrino, and I wear these because I moved here, I haven't been here a hundred years, I haven't even been here a year. I moved across the country specifically because I have problems with my eyes that only Duke could fix, okay? So I'm not trying to be anything at all. I also live at Creekside Apartments in apartment twenty-one. Many of you probably know that there was a murder at Creekside Apartments not long ago. The woman who was murdered was harmless, she had a good heart. She was a little off, like, you know, like we all are, challenged, disabled, and she was brutally killed a hundred feet from my front door and everybody else's front doors. This has never been discussed. There's been, to my knowledge, no resolution, nobody's ever been charged. We've never had any feedback from management. Delaney York, who's a police officer, has been great. She has helped us form a neighborhood watch group. So the general feeling amongst the residents is one of helplessness, hopelessness, despair, and fear. You know, the fear of eviction, retaliation by neighbors, management, no lease renewals. People are afraid, and people are getting desperate. A lot of people have given up, which is why there are only five of us here, or other people are afraid to come here. The poor and the vulnerable people are being denied basic respect and dignity. They're being ignored, dismissed, ridiculed, and ultimately, we're being left to live in substandard conditions. Denial of basic human rights is going to be a breeding ground for animosity and discord. We've had one murder. I think that's very telling. Several of us who had pursued repairs have been invited by the management company to move out in writing, and we'd be happy to share that if that was necessary. If you don't like it here, if you don't like what we're doing and or not doing, move out. I also love the setting. I mean, Creekside Apartments is great, it's a freak, you know, it's beautiful. I would love to stay there. However, you know, I am a disabled person. I have a brain injury amongst a bunch of other things, but I am not a vulnerable person like most of the residents that are too vulnerable to lock in this door or to write a letter to management. We don't know whether it's the owner or it's the management company, because we can't find out. The people, I could go through the laundry list, but the people I've contacted, we have contacted so far, have been every level of the management company, hired by Prestige Management, JFF Properties, which is the owner's offices in Greensboro. I've called the Office of Environmental Health, the fire department, referred to the fire marshal, who has contacted, well, he left a message for management regarding the fire hazard of the clogged dryer ducts. I've not heard back on that. Several, I've also contacted legal aid. I've spoken with your building inspector, David Brooks, is that your building inspector? Anyway, county, okay. So I've informed that Chatham County has no minimum housing requirements. When I looked it up, I've also learned that the town of Pittsburgh has no minimum housing requirements. All they have to legally provide is a roof, heat, cooling, and running water. That's it. So legal aid pretty much says, if there are no laws, we can't help you. They're not breaking any laws by this stuff falling on my head. And it falls on my head all the time. My kitchen, I have a picture of my kitchen ceiling. They told me yesterday they're not going to paint it because that would just be a Band-Aid. So what's happening is that, passive aggressively, they're not fixing anything because I've complained, because I'm speaking up on behalf of the people who can't do that, because it's the right thing to do. So, I mean, I do have a list. When I moved in, I lived for over two weeks without stove because the gas wasn't working. There was a water leak under the kitchen sink in the closet. When I touched the blinds, I moved from Bellingham, Washington, like a real house. I was appalled. I touched the blinds, they fell on the floor, on my head. When I opened the windows, they literally, literally fell out on me. One fell on my dog, which was even worse. The washer and dryer hookups were rotted and broken. I have photographs of that. The wall behind was, it's rotten and full of mold. Wallpaper's peeling, the vinyl floors are peeling, there are roaches, spiders, mouse drawbeats, and I found a rat. The kitchen cupboards are not sealed from the outside, which allows bourbon to freely breathe essentially in my house. The Terminix people that finally, after months, came and wrote in their report that this has to be fixed. I called Terminix today and asked them if I could have a copy of the report. They said, no, we cannot. So, you know, the grab bars on the tub fell out when I used them the first time, well, for the first month or two, until somebody finally fixed them. I mean, it's just appalling. So because there are no codes, I guess, I'm hoping that maybe the city of Pittsburgh could make some codes, some basic building, minimum residential. You're talking about affordable housing. I mean, that's kind of what Creekside is. So affordable housing, we all need building codes. I mean, shouldn't there be a rule that says your ceiling can't fall on you, or, you know, you can't look in the kitchen cupboard and see outside? Like, basic rules? We don't have any. So I don't know where to turn.
Would you let us know when your next community meeting is in progress, when you send some references? I know that John Bonnetson's met with you, but would you let us know when that would be? And I believe we need to move on to other items on the agenda, but I really am grateful that you're here with me tonight.
Yeah, we would be happy to do that.
It's Thursday, I think we're in Pittsburgh.
I guess the bottom line is that we don't know where else to turn. I read you the list.
Thank you. That concludes our citizens' matters, our commissioner updates. This is a time when we let folks know exactly what we've been doing in the community. I've been a little bit limited on what I've been able to do over the last month or so, but Thursday of last week, I met with Congressman Walker and spoke to him about some concerns that we had in the community. Also been preparing a proclamation for the important high school fifty reunion class, which is also a history lesson for me as well. So are there any other commissioners who have been to meetings that they need to report on, climate change, Main Street, up there? Yep? And that's sort of kind of our.
Well, I can mention that I attended PBA meeting, and it was mostly a presentation by the county director in Apex, and how they have, for the last forty years, developed their downtown to be a vibrant place, and some of the rules and regulations that they have put in place. So it was a very enlightening presentation. Her name is Diane, and I, her last name was Ken, and she has been a colleague for about four years. She's, yeah, and so it was remarkable the things that they regulated and the things that they did to produce that result.
The gentleman's kind of all the big black stories.
And they are not a part of the Main Creek program, but they are locally organized and that is fully insane.
They also lay articles in the Southern City this past month on the paper.
Anything else or important? We're going to research new business. There was one question with respect to the site plan. There were questions about that that we decided that we'd share a new business person.
Were those, I'm sorry, are we doing those old business or?
Do you want to flip over? I think. I think we need to hear from Bill Holman, without too much of you. But what was that one question regarding the?
The water draft. Yeah, I had a question on that. Found all these places now. Yeah, I guess addressing this with Mr. Bruce Beck, but back on getting to the water shortages relating to water rationing. My question was, where did we come up with this five-time surcharge? And who does that go to? I think if we go to stage two, like a two-time surcharge, is that, does this surcharge go to our customers or is that out of their control?
I think, I'll try to answer the second part of that question, and then I'll ask Mr. Royal about the first part of his question, but is any surcharge, is it be elaborated against, I guess, a lack of point or way to put it, any violators? Be assessed to the violator and classified as an...
Okay, so it would be to every customer in the...
Right.
Just a violator, I didn't, I didn't raise this at that point.
And then the first part.
That's correct.
And then the three, man, the court of justice.
That's correct, it's the violator.
Okay. And then I think you asked Commissioner Carroll, where did we come up? And I think that would say some other models.
It was other models.
Okay.
We're going to be discussing the...
Yeah, this is really to kind of accept, I mean, more than appropriate, ask questions tonight, or, you know, glad you're looking at it, but, yeah, we'll be discussing it in greater detail.
Okay, right. But like I said, I didn't read it, it just said all customers, you know, so that's... Thank you, thank you, Perry.
We'll clarify that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm reading it just the same way, that this applies to all customers, this surcharge. It's not specifically that it applies to any...
Okay, and I don't think that's the intent, or that, I don't think that's, that's what we want as the intent. We will try to fix that.
Yeah, I think that there are other areas where we talked about the fourth, we talked about the first violation, second violation, third violation, but that seems to be where you're addressing.
Yeah, that's more directly at one particular individual offender.
Person on the other side of your street.
Yeah, we'll fix the known feature on that.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right. We welcome Bill Holman, who I met many years ago, and he was a lobbyist for environmental matters in the legislature, and I was delighted to find that one day Bill Holman had bought property in Pittsburgh, and so we welcome you both as a citizen and as a speaker tonight. He is with the North Carolina Conservation Fund and would like to address the board about water quality.
Thank you, Mary Perry. Members of the board, again, I'm Bill Holman, my wife and I live at 199 West Salisbury Street, moved to Pittsburgh about four years ago, and made me feel very welcome, really appreciate that. I do work for the Conservation Fund, but tonight I'm just speaking as a citizen of Pittsburgh. And just a little background, I've been involved in water issues throughout my career. Mary Perry, you know, I was secretary of the Department of Environmental Resources under Governor Hunt. I was exec director of the Clean Water Management Trust Fund for about six years, and was proud to work with the town of Pittsburgh on your reclaim water project, the Clean Water Management Trust Fund, the survival fund, along with Congress to price to get the water, reclaim water line down to three M. I also chaired the State's Water Infrastructure Commission for many years, and then had a tour at the Duke University Nicholas Institute for Environmental Policy Solutions, where I focused on kind of water finance and water infrastructure. So, proud to say, I've also, you know, been a longtime advocate for investments in water infrastructure, worked on a number of the Clean Water Line Campaigns the state ran that provided additional loans and grants to cities and counties across the state, primarily targeted for the smaller towns like Pittsburgh. And I have to do, Mary Perry, I want to thank you. There's been some restarting of discussions about protecting, cleaning up, sort of, I really appreciate your participation in that, and that's important. What I want to say tonight is I want to give some, maybe some general thoughts on the value of your water system, your water, wastewater utilities, and then I've got three recommendations for your consideration. You know, I think you probably know, I mean, the water, wastewater infrastructure you have, it's paid for by your rate payers, your taxpayers. I think it's probably the most valuable asset the town has. It probably shows up on your books as, you know, what you pay for, but it's a precious resource, and its value increases, I think, every day. The, and I think you know, those assets are critical of public health, environmental protection, but really the town's future growth and prosperity. And, you know, it's not just the capital systems you have, your actual permits have tremendous bank, and they're valuable, partly because of the constraints of the neighborhood, if you will. Wastewater discharge is sent on the Hall River and Jordan Lake or Cap, not just for Pittsburgh, but for everybody. So that's the scarce resource that in every year, the value of that ability discharge is increasing, and I think, yeah, there's unlikely to be any change in that in the future. Just to maybe underscore the value of those permits is, of your neighbors across Jordan Lake, the Western Wake folks, they spent millions of dollars and years on environmental studies, engineering, to get a new discharge into the Cape Fear River below Buckhammer Dam, so in a much less nutrient-challenged kind of situation. So that's what you have to go through to get the kind of permits that the town has been able to procure. So, there may be some possibility in the future, if you adopt the stormwater utility, you might be able to produce over here, or gain some credits for water, or, excuse me, for wastewater there, so that's a conversation a lot of communities are starting to have, and I think that's a very speculative opportunity. So, something to think about in the future, but I think, you know, really living under some real constraints today. And I think you know that the state recently allocated almost all of the remaining water supply in Jordan Lake. Pittsburgh, Chatham County got, got some allocation for future growth, that's very important, but, you know, so that's another resource that's, it's fine, it's pretty much allocated. So, my overall point is, you face some really serious constraints for enabling your future growth, and it's going to take, I think, some real strategy to, you're still actually in a great place, in a great location, got great resources, but it's just going to take a lot more creativity, I think, to handle some of these decisions. I've got three recommendations to consider, and I believe, this first one, I think you've had some discussion at your retreat, but I just want to underscore this. I think the town really needs to hire an engineering firm to help you come up with a master plan for your water, your wastewater, your stormwater, your reclaimed water in an integrated fashion. And, you know, you're serving four, five thousand folks today, but we're really got to be putting in place that strategy for when there are fifty-five or sixty thousand people living in this community. That's a big leap, and you can't get there with incremental decisions, it's going to take a plan, strategy, and that's not just the engineering strategy, it's the financial strategy to provide that service. And you have some actual real opportunities, there's so much new construction underway, you can do some creative things with stormwater, reclaimed water, opportunities are not really available to some other communities, but if you also, if you don't do them, you may foreclose on those opportunities. And, you know, keeping the rates affordable for the folks who live there is really critical. That's a real hard thing to do with, you've got that much growth, and so I think you need some thought about that rate structure so that you've got some, again, there's some strategies you can undertake to keep rates up, rates up. And I got to say, I have some allegiance to some other schools, but the Environmental Finance Center up at USC School of Government is one of the best resources in the entire country for helping towns, helping utilities think through what's a good RFP for that, to hire that engineer, what's good advice on the rate structure, what are best practices. The existing capacity you have is really a critical sort of asset to the town, and, you know, I think you should, something you really need to think hard about, how you allocate the wastewater capacity that you have, because you've got a finite amount. And so I would suggest you get some like appraisal for value of that, that capacity, because there'll be lots of folks coming to you saying they want some of it, and then, you know, it certainly is not there to be hoarded, it's there to be used, but you need to be very thoughtful about where it's allocated and what's the appropriate, how it's priced. You know, the town has been working with Sanford, where you've got the Forest Mine down in Sanford, you know, they're not, get away, their capacity has been a negotiation the two towns have had, and Sanford's got, well, here's the cost we got to recover, and Pittsburgh's got to say, here's what's reasonable to us, you know, it's struck, it's kind of a fair bargain, and I think that's how you should approach that wastewater capacity that you have. You know, if the shoe's on the other foot, if the private developer has some extra capacity, if the town needed some, you know, they wouldn't give it away, they would, they would negotiate. So I encourage you to think about it like a, like a piece of real property. If you, the town's going to sell a piece of property, part of your due diligence is you get an appraisal, what's at work? What are the best strategies? Can we sell it? Can we lease it? Can we at least purchase it? So keep, you know, keep those options open, so. Third recommendation I'd urge you to consider is, there are so many challenging issues coming, coming up at you on these water issues, and water, wastewater, stormwater, reclaimed water. You know, got capable staff, but I, you know, there's a lot of talent in, in the town of Pittsburgh, and I think it'd be wise to create some kind of citizen advisory committee, approve the citizens that can interact with you, that can work with the staff, can bring some new perspectives to the challenges the utility faces, can help think through, you know, what's, what is the master plan, what is the strategy, and help, you know, take that word to the citizens of the town, because, and, you know, you need business folks, you need the conservation folks, community people, you can get a broad cross-section of people involved. And I'll just say, you know, one of your neighbors, Riley, had, there's a series of kind of rate shocks, and you had utilities coming to the town, the city council, over and over, so we need a rate increase, we need a rate increase, you know, the council just kind of had to throw up his hands and say, well, what is going on here? So they created an advisory committee, and it's put the utility on a more sustainable footing, has improved the relationship between the utility and the city council, and, you know, just brought some fresh thinking to the utility business, so. So just to sum up, you know, I think the, your, that water, wastewater capacity you have is incredibly valuable asset to you. It is, you know, one of the tools you can use to keep your rates affordable, it's critical to, you know, to the town's future growth and prosperity, and I would hope you consider these ideas of, you know, let's move forward with that master plan and strategy, you know, let's value and price accordingly that wastewater capacity that you have, and consider more active engagement from the citizens of the town, you know, working with your utility staff and yourselves on how to move these issues forward. So I'll follow up with some written comments, and be happy to answer any questions this evening. Thanks very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mary Perry. Questions for Bill Holman?
Well, I hear what you're saying, Bill, and, you know, one of the things you mentioned was this limited allocation that the state's not issuing anymore, and we've got three points, I forgot one seven or two seven, that we can discharge into the Hall, you know, or Robeson Creek.
Right.
And so, you know, I look upon the Sanford agreement, the town worked out as a real good way to preserve that capacity for the future, so that we can send up to two million gallons a day down to Sanford, of course, for, you know, you'll be very familiar with eighty, ninety rule and all of that, you know, we're getting a hundred percent of that two million gallons, whereas typically we get twenty percent if we discharge it. So I think it's a really good way to move forward with the beginning of this master plan, if you will. Reclaiming the water is going to be a big part of the equation, and we've got in the equation with the Sanford, this interbasic transfer, net volume transfer, if you will, we can get water back from them, it'll allow us to increase our discharge. So I think, you know, the town's done, made some pretty good steps forward in doing these things and thinking about this future.
Well, I agree. You know, the town's got a little, and, you know, the Forest Mine, you know, Sanford, I think that's a good interim, you know, buys you some time, gives you some capacity. Sanford Clinic's got the capacity, it's also pretty expensive, you know, so it's one of the things you, we need to look at the whole system, I think, to make sure we're not foreclosing. Because the town's got limited resources, you know, what's, what's the best place for the town to invest, for the capacity, so.
And so on that, that point of affordability, if we are actually getting a hundred percent of the capacity we're buying, you know, that's a lot better than getting eighty percent of the capacity we buy if we were to create a plant in town. The other thing that's really interesting about this Sanford deal is how the rate structure can actually be reduced for the customers. So it's, it is an expensive proposition, but it turned out to be the cheapest that we had up on the table, and in the operational realm, it also is going to deliver very affordable rates. So it is helping us to keep those rates under control, because, as you know, we do have pretty high water sewer rates in the town of Pittsburgh, so, you know, it's a win-win in that regard with that, so, or the Forest Mine.
Other questions for Bill?
I have one, Bill. You said about a wastewater capacity appraisal.
Mm-hmm.
I know how valued this permit discharge is. How do you go about appraisal, or what's this capacity really worth?
Well, that's an excellent question, and there are actually different strategies to evaluate. One would be replacement calls, which, that could lead to a pretty high number, but my advice would be, get the, talk to our friends at the USC Brown Plant Center, get some thoughts about a process, but, you know, my thought is, most of the good engineering firms could work with the town and say, here's, here's the value of that capacity today, and then help you also forecast, you know, it appreciates in value every year, what's the value it's going to be over the next ten or twenty years. And, you know, it's going to be, like all appraisals, a good estimate, but that would give you the pool you need to then, if you've got to weigh these competing proposals on where does that wastewater capacity go? What's the most beneficial, or is the town offering it, or is the town getting a fair, fair price for it?
In return.
In return, that's it. Because it's, it's worth a lot more than what you pay for.
Well, I have one question, and that is the allocation that we were given in the Henry Hall River. We've been told by numerous organizations that it's, that it's at a location which is particularly sensitive, and that we've been told that it should never actually be used, so we really only have a fraction of what it is, I mean, if that's the case, we only have really Robeson Creek discharge point, because the Hall, if you ever envisioned that the Hall would be actually used?
Yeah, I'd say it's, you have to look at all your alternatives and, you know, sort of pick the one that's, has the least environmental impact, is the most cost-effective for the town. So with the kind of high levels of wastewater treatment we can get to today, I think technically you can meet the requirements, but I think, yes, you still face, face some political obstacles and citizen concerns. Hall River's a great resource, and not just Chatham County, but... Our River's a great resource, and not just Chatham County, but everybody in the Triangle. So I, I think it's great that you've got a permit for it, that gives you some, you know, some leverage in those discussions, but I, I agree, it's not, just because you've got a permit for it doesn't mean it's necessarily going to happen. And I also think the strength of the kind of bigger picture, sort of the master plan idea, it helps not just you, but the community kind of way that it portray also. If you, I think you have a robust planning process, and again, the best alternative for the environment, the economy, your community was, you know, I mean, I'm not saying this it could be, but maybe if that was the best option of the discharge for the Hall River, then, then you've got a kind of solid case, you've had a process that's built to support. So people understand if it's, it'll go here, it'll go someplace worse. And that's complicated, but that's the kind of, I think, citizen engagement you're going to be, and the county's going to leave that as well, so.
There have been several occasions where we've been in this room, and we've heard from our utility folks that the water we're discharging is cleaner than what's going out of the Hall.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and to that point, that's why that reclaimed water, because that's a resource for, not just the town, but for the developers. And so I certainly envision, I mean, you've seen this different parts of the country now, where that reclaimed water goes back in the building, and it's used for the non- the waste, like toilet flushing or cooling. And that's, reduces your discharge, but also reduces your deep water out of George Lake or the Hall, so, you know, you get those multiple benefits.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I, I found this very informative, and I think y'all heard me, my fellow commissioners and mayor have heard me grappling in public about this, and in our side conversations, and I think in at least one utilities workshop, maybe two, I've asked the questions, trying to get a handle on, what is the value of this thing? What would it, what did it take? How many years of work was it originally? What do we pay for it? And to put the word appraisal on it, it's just, it's a, it's a brilliant help to have this clarity. And it may be very unconventional to try and appraise the value of a permit, and it may have never been done, but we do have some really good thinkers at UNC Center for Environmental Finance. And we have access to national caliber engineering firms, and a firm with a broad enough reach might be able to find case studies from other communities that have grappled with these So, you know, Commissioner Farrell, to your point, I think, I appreciated Bill's point that, that, you know, there's a replacement cost, but just from the little bit that I know about public sector finance, it seems like in economics that, you know, we could look at opportunity cost, what is the cost is if we don't have that fraction of that any longer, or for a temporary period. There's direct impacts, there's, that's just one, and detrimental. Indirect impacts, along with those go the economic multiplier concept, and I could see differentiated benefits from valuation of dense development in town versus maybe similarly dense development, but in a greenfield area, whether it's in Shattan Park or elsewhere. And so, you know, I think there's also bigger picture things that, that Bill's touched upon, stormwater, viewing these things as resources rather than a waste. And I'm also mindful of Owassa, tremendous expertise in Owassa. And so I guess I would, I would like to make a formal motion that we empower our town manager to obtain an appraisal of our NPDS permit. That's a motion.
Moved by John Vaughn, seconded by Beth Wilson-Pope. Is there further discussion?
What would the, do you have any idea of how to set parameters of appraisal? Well, there are all side, there are all kinds of benefits associated with sewer capacity. There's even out of mill, because tax revenue is part of that. The price of a gallon, we've already got a number that we're using for capital fees, which seems to put a price on it. There are other disconnected or ancillary connections between what sewer capacity does for a community. Do we weigh those into the analysis? One, what is the cost of construction? And how do you put that into the ledger when you're calling up your appraisal? So I'm just, I know of communities that make it so expensive that it's hard for them to achieve some of the other goals, such as a sample of water. And I, and I see that connection very directly. So I'm just curious, how, how complicated and how complex is it? Because I would want to consider the benefit side as well as the cost side.
So, but you would consider for a higher level, I'd ask you to talk about that, do the early process. Sure, that looks like something, we haven't done this before, it looks like something that's, you get to this, and then, you have harder to figure out the process.
That, I think that's true. We actually, an appraisal certainly would be a good idea, I believe. And we already know that, that all of our permits are very, very valuable. We already know that. But to look at the whole picture, I think that would, that would be great, and then we, when they come back to us, we can set those particular parameters that we would like for them to look at. So I think that would be a good idea, so that we can just be comfortable and know exactly what we believe the permit is worth. But I, I think, again, I know they're, they are very valuable. I was here when we went through one of the processes of obtaining that, and it was very difficult to obtain. So to me, it's really invaluable. But I think it would be great for that appraisal, so we can actually look at that.
I, I strongly agree with you, Commissioner Baldwin. I think that there needs to be some kind of a process here where it's iterative, where we, we begin some investigations or, or manager, Bruce Beck, begin some investigations, come back with some information. In my experience, all of the centers at UNC have a remarkable desire to be very balanced. The School of Government, for example, and all the training we received there, each of us, and all the more so with the political pressures that are on the town. So I trust that they would be able to come back to us with recommendations that would be very balanced, and it would be in the best interest of taxpayers and the economy. So I'm, I'm less worried about that. I think it does need to be iterative. We'll, we'll ask for information, get it, consider it, we'll then move forward with some guidelines and regulations.
Brian, please.
Yeah, thanks. I think it's been a good discussion, and I think it's one that we've encountered with some internal and external conversations that we've had on this with the developer. I think, you know, I think the School of Government is going to be a good resource. I think, you've got to be careful about how much information you're really expecting out of them, because I think, like, a lot of times when you ask the School of Government something, I was just up there today, and I think it's great, and I'd work out of their offices if I could. But I think a lot of times when you ask them a question, you're going to get "that depends", quote-unquote, answers. So I think it's important that we maybe not over-calibrate our expectations for what kind of parameters we want to set in terms of placing the value on our remaining capacity. Because I think where we end up is something a little bit more dollars and cents, as opposed to getting in discussions with multipliers and things like that. But I think it's going to be a great, I think it's a, it's a process. I personally would look forward to it, and certainly put my feet in the water and see what comes up, and then get back to you guys. I just want, I just want to tell you guys, though, to just be careful and make sure that we manage our expectations, the kind of information that you're expecting to receive. Like, you know, I'd rather not spend three months debating, you know, minutia of, of parameters of this. I kind of want to find a process, get it, set it, and then, and then move forward.
Is there any ready to go?
I was just going to say, I, I really like all of your recommendations. I personally would like to know, we have to say for main project, but that's not necessarily long-term, but I personally think that the citizens of the town can know what the long-range plan is, and that's something that we need to do, not just for tonight, but start moving in that direction. And I love the idea of citizen advisory, too, as well, a way to keep that community involved in the process.
I'm going to steal all that. I'll just slump down here behind Fred. What happened to your house? I used to have a misbehaved, too. I've done a few.
That was a paper motion, which was a motion to empower the town manager to proceed with investigation of appraisal of the, of the just wastewater, of all of the water.
NPDS permit.
NPDS permit.
Correct.
Okay. And we have that motion by John, seconded by Beth. Does it favor, please, in the case right thing, aye?
Aye.
Does the motion carry? I'm not able to, I have a long period of time right now, and yet, and yet, is it, would it be time to take a break, or shall we hear the?
Let's take a break.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to take a second.
Curtis Williams is missing. He's been waiting for you. Where you get your shirts?
After our break, may we have a motion to continue review?
So moved.
Moved by John Vaughn, seconded by Michael Piotr, to resume our meeting. We're looking at new business site plan review for Hunt Forest Products, and we will be available to lead us through this particular item.
Thank you. This site plan is E201704, Hunt Forest Products has been in progress for review and is seeking approval. The proposal is to construct an 11,250 square foot storage building, 21 feet in height, on a 29 acre parcel. The proposed location is 840 Long Creek, Pittsburgh Road. This location is zone M2 heavy industrial, and is currently home to a wood yard, which is operated by Hunt Forest. The planning board considered the proposed plans at their meeting on August 7, 2017. The board found the plans to be satisfactory and recommended approval in a vote of six to zero. The plans for the storage building have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development orders by the appropriate department, and staff is recommending approval of the proposed removals.
Any questions? Any questions for the board? There are motions from the board.
Make a motion to approve with one condition, that they change the text of note number one to state Pittsburgh is only ordinance, as opposed to the Chatham County's only ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
That is on, she's on C203.
Okay. Thank you for touching that.
Michael moved for approval of the site of the, the lot that it's changed from the county of Chatham to Pittsburgh, ETJ. Is there a letter to Michael's motion? Second. Seconded by Beth Wilson-Pope. Is there any further discussion? Does it favor, please, in the case right thing, aye?
Aye.
Now, for old, under old business, we have moved over the extension of the site plan for lot number nine on 64 East Business Park. There was a question that somebody had with respect to that, and we have that as number one of old business. Who was having that question? Was it you, John?
Oh, yes. Okay, just very quick. Yeah, this is the commercial property across from State Place Credit Union, East Street Industrial Drive. I, I just remembered when looking through this, understanding this is just a request to extend for one more year, so that they might continue working in preparation for their construction development. I remember back in March when Mr. Billy Clark came and spoke to us about his doctor-prescribed daily walks, and the, the idea of a park bench seemed very suitable, because, especially because that particular location, they've even sketched in, I think, a restaurant potentially, although that's not prescribed. And more importantly, they have two sidewalk connections to our town sidewalk on their landscape plan. And so I mentioned it to Jeff Jones already, he's very happy to discuss it with the developer, and I just wanted to present that and see if I could get some head nods or, or head shakes, so. Anyone else interested in maybe seeing if the developer might be willing to donate or work with town in that capacity?
Adding a park bench.
Adding park bench.
Yeah, great.
On the developer's property adjacent to the public sidewalk. Seems like what they pour in concrete for one of those two sidewalks, if you make small, stretch.
And we have made some progress. Talked to the people at State Place Credit Union, and they're interested in the project. They want to match the size, the benches that are used at the dog, pet store that's there on the same side of the street. And First Bank, I approached them about it, and they, they might have a little bit of a problem with having a bench that's close to the bank, because they don't want people voidering near the bank, but out near the sidewalk, which is anything that's what we're talking about, is, is just fine. So that both of the banks are looking into it.
No, it sounds like more of a conversation I think to have of them, so, thank you, Mayor.
All right, so.
So we need to dispense with that matter, and I'll move that we approve the extension request for one year.
Yes. Moved by John Vaughn, seconded by Pamela Baldwin.
And I also mentioned this, that I think we're relatively unique with our site plan approval duration of one year. Most municipalities, it's two, and often it's four years, because it's not always easy to get everything all together in one year's time to do that. And I think our UDO includes a longer period, and I recall it's two or four years?
I don't think it's four, it may be 24 months, maybe 24 months.
Yeah, okay. So just something to know, to consider.
As the majority of the surrounding parcels are either zoned or used for median to high-density residential, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request. A public hearing was held on June 26th. No citizens chose to speak. The planning board considered this rezoning at the meeting on July 5th. The board initially posed questions regarding C1 being sandwiched by residential districts, but after some discussion over the future of the area stretching from downtown to Chatham Mills, the board found the request to be consistent with the future land use plan and voted unanimously to recommend approval. The rezoning was brought before the Board of Commissioners on July 24th, but was tabled to August 14th meeting due to concerns over how the development of the North Masonic Street corridor should progress.
And I do appreciate the board postponing that, because I did have some concern. And those concerns were very much addressed, thank you, by Jeff Jones, who reiterated the process through which Orange builders went through your criteria and working field. So, thank you very much for that very, very good explanation. Are there any... So, I'm satisfied and do think that at some point, we probably need to sit down and talk about whether we're going to be looking at conditional zoning as the town grows and builds faster and faster, or whether we're going to allow outright street settlements, but I'm yours, we had a book, I have no questions from you.
Note of Brian, this is more for affordable housing.
Okay.
But I do agree that conditional use or conditional zoning is an important topic, and it's an important tool for this town. And Victoria and myself will dive deeper into both and report back to the board in a month or so.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you. I do think we need to consider that, and I was very used to conditional use zoning when I was on the county planning board. Very good, thank you.
Well, and Mayor, I know you were concerned based on some of the previous conversations we had about the use. So, we happen to know adult book stores are not permitted, nightclubs are not permitted in the Z1 zone.
Great.
And while they are in the Z1 zone. And I'm looking forward to where we change our requirements for townhomes to be special use permits. It's a heavy, heavy burden for, I think, a really good housing option.
There are many towns up there on these streets. I can't think of one, at least two lots down here, looks like there's some sort of structure. All I can think of is green dock, that's...
There are small houses building up. Mike Dasher, are those lots vacant?
Everything is vacant.
Actually, one of the person that spoke earlier, concerned about historic structure, I just wonder if there's anything historic in those two lots, if there are.
He was referring to a property further over on the side, it's not within a rezoning.
Okay. Please. Direct access to Masonic Street? From the power, it doesn't look as though it's real.
To what, to which?
From the main, large tract. Does it have direct access from to...
Yeah, it does. Masonic Street.
That's just the lot of play. What was that, sir?
I know there's been talk of that street coming like an extension, the way for the downtown to extend, so in some ways, yeah, do you think we want that commercial development here as opposed to just residential? I think that it would be a mixed, housing and commercial here.
So, I'm thinking that this might be an example of living and learning, learning as we go. I'm guessing that in the near future, as we increase density in the downtown area, in the older downtown area, as we have infill development that is higher lot density or higher intention density or higher commercial density, we're going to get more traffic, we're going to have a lot of other repercussions to knock on effects, whatever you want to call it, side effects. And I'm wondering, in this case, well, even not this particular case, but Tom Roberts, who owns the, or represents the mill, was hoping that they have a master plan that included significant residential, yeah, residential development at some time in the future. Path is towards that, whether or not it's even going to happen, but if residential density increases or commercial throughput increases on the side, how does traffic flow increasing going through an un-metered, unlit, uncontrolled intersection, how does that work out? How do we grapple with these things in future as town changes dramatically in density? Is that something that any of us board members might speak to, or...
I wonder if there's any right of way for Small Street to continue. I'm still at the thinking that Small Street sort of ends, but I wonder if there's some sort of right of way to be extended at some point. They maybe can connect over Chatham Forest, but I have no idea if that's even subvertible to be possible.
There is a, there is a buffer stream that runs along this property. There's, well, it's hard to see down the... Is it buffer?
A buffer stream that runs right along the way, so it's not in the property line.
So, it would not be possible to expand Small Street?
It would be possible, but there's a, there's a buffer stream actually there. Or there's, there's a stream actually there.
So, that would require addressing area impacts or something along those lines.
That might be a way to have Small Street continue and have, Chatham Forest, and then have the road, and then the font, if you're a Small Street, or a...
And I guess the reason for my question wasn't so much to get into ways of this particular piece of property, this particular intersection at this moment in time, but to ask the general question, as we, as we increase in density, how are we going to grapple with these things in the future? Mr. Jones, do you have any comments?
Well, certainly, we would look at traffic patterns and streets, and then if there's any new streets that need to be added, we'd look at our thoroughfare plan, and if there needs to be a more localized street network for a project, we'd look at that as well. You know, this is a unique situation where you've got Masonic Street deadening into a private property, that generally is private, but public too, because people drive through to get to here and there, and some people use it as a cut-through. And that, that would be concerning if we added more density on Masonic, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to balance that through the site plan and subdivision process. How does that affect the mill property? And is there, is there a way to make Small Street sort of connect to this larger piece so that there's another way out, not just utilizing Masonic Street? One of the things that the UDO will do will be interconnectivity, something that we don't currently promote very well in our current company, but there's a criteria, when you get certain units or when you get certain density, you have to connect to adjacent parcel, you have to make sure that there's going to be another way out. So, that, that's going to be hugely beneficial to making sure that we don't create projects that have 100 lots down one single access drive or something like that. So, that's how it's balanced, that density is that there will be coordinates that says, okay, the traffic can come in this way until a certain point, but then once you get over a certain number of units, you're going to have to have another connection or provide for something that works. Signal. Yeah, yeah. So, I think, I think there's, there's things coming in that...
In doors.
Yeah.
And so then it's in your shop.
Yeah, and we do, we do pretty well at trying to work with developers to say, you know, this is better designed, and they know it too, so they have been doing it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Where was a...
Is there a motion to make? End of this with our question.
Is there any further discussion? Oh, we have a consistency statement, don't we? Okay. Then, then we need to bifurcate our motion to approve the consistency statement, is that correct? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye for the consistency statement.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, and then for the actual motion to approve, I mean, we have another vote, I mean, another motion to approve?
To approve.
Second. Motion by Michael Theo, seconded by Beth Wilson-Foley. And is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye on the motion to approve. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next is Jeff Jones, who's going to lead us into further discussion of the second set of additional elements. And those include general provisions and definitions, open space landscaping, tree protection, and stormwater.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is the second set of elements that you mentioned, including general provisions and definitions. We'll be discussing open space, tree protection, landscaping, and stormwater. We held a public hearing back in March on these particular items. Chatham Park Elements Committee gave recommendations to you all back in February. Plan Board considered these revised elements during their May and June 28 meetings. They, then, we received elements, revised elements in May and June, and the Plan Board considered these elements in their June and July 5 meeting. Board did ultimately vote to recommend approval of these revised elements. These elements were first generally discussed at the June 12 Town Board meeting. At that meeting, however, we did not have a Plan Board recommendation, and we knew that the stormwater element was still in writing. And we again received that on June 28 with stormwater element. So, really for tonight is start the discussion on these five elements, and have any feedback for the applicant on these elements as revised. Remember, this went through public hearing process, there was comments received during that time, there was comments received from staff, there was comments addressed that the additional elements committee put forth and Planning Board, and what you have before you is the revised draft that includes them being Chatham Park, making revisions to these particular elements. And certainly, Chatham Park didn't walk you through any of the revisions that they did make. I can answer any questions. Sure, if you want, call Chatham Park up and have them kind of go through their, their revisions. We can do that, kind of walk you through it.
I have one question, and that is, there's a really nice revision on the open space element that it would not allow in lieu, in and out unless it was allowed by town ordinance, and my question is, is it currently, or is it proposed for the UDO to have?
I want to say that there may be some payment in lieu in the UDO, but I'm, but I'm not so certain on, on open space. I'm not even sure that, that open space has a fee in lieu for the UDO. I'd have to double check that. I know the Parks...
I think we spoke fairly strongly about that.
Yeah, I know Parks Director is not in favor of that, so if it's in the UDO, we would be commenting that that, for open space, but that's not something that we would want to see. And that was, yes, they did address the comment that was made.
I believe I could tell from the tree protection portal, if I remember correctly, I'm not sure about that.
In the, in the UDO draft, or...
In lieu of...
In the UDO draft, or in this, in their element? Yes. Okay.
How is the board wishing to see, do you want to take one at a time? Chuck, come up and help go through it, or what do you want?
My feeling is, some of the documents may need additional consideration, and I feel like we haven't had enough times to really see these documents to throw over, take the open space element, that, for open space, I personally would like to see that happen a lot to the UDO. I'm sure the rest of the board is...
I agree. I agree. Just got it from Thursday night, and this is a lot to read. I mean, I counted a couple hundred pages, so... The landscaping element and general provisions and definitions, I mean, I feel like, honestly, I would very much like to be able to really thoroughly digest, and if you're confident in my review, which I don't feel blinded by any of them, but, I mean, if people are feeling that we really must take action on some of them, and very interested in dividing them up, I could reluctantly go along with consideration of general provisions and definitions and landscaping. The problem with, that I see with that is that my, my greatest concern at this point, which I'll describe in a moment, it's intertwined amongst open space landscaping, tree protection, and stormwater. And so if we approve landscaping, then we give up options to give input, substantive input in ways that intertwine open space landscaping, tree protection, and stormwater. And that is that, you know, going back to the, to the master plan, there, there is such an emphasis on the southwest shores assessment. And I just, I have heard from people with much greater technical expertise than so, biologists, ecologists, water resource specialists, that we don't have adequate consideration built into these documents, not adequate consideration of the southwest shores.
The landscaping element and general provisions and definitions, I mean, I feel like, honestly, I would very much like to be able to really thoroughly digest, and I feel confident in my review, which I don't feel offended about any of them, but, I mean, if people are feeling that we really must take action on some of them, and very interested in dividing them I could reluctantly go along with consideration of general provisions and definitions and landscape. The problem that I see with that is that my greatest concern at this point, which I'll describe in a moment, it's intertwined amongst open space landscaping, tree protection, and stormwater. And so if we approve landscaping, then we give up options to give input, substantive input, in ways that intertwine open space landscaping, tree protection, and stormwater. And that is that, going back to the master plan, there is such an emphasis on the Southwest Shores Assessment. And I just, I have heard from people with much greater technical expertise than myself, biologists, ecologists, water resource specialists, that we don't have adequate consideration built into these documents, not adequate consideration of the Southwest Shores. And we have done a very prolonged and detailed review that the Additional Elements Review Committee did remarkable work, but I think it's really important to note that there were no environmental experts in that group. No one had education in environmental science of any kind. So I think that's a big flaw to the review that's happened, and I'm very hungry for that.
It'd be great to be able to review the Southwest Shore assessment again, if there's a way to get a copy today, again, as well as the Conservation Committee did a huge amount of work for the U D O, but it comes back a lot to things that they recommended. They even created, as I recall, priorities. And we really don't care what they recommended to this document, that's one of the things I'd like to have more time with, to see that we are in line with what Southwest Shore Assessment, as well as the Conservation Committee recommendations that they made. We just have the time to look at that and see if we are in keeping with some of their recommendations, because there was a tremendous amount of work done there, and they gathered together a incredible group of people who were scientists and experts, and it was a really incredible review. And I think it'd be very important to compare that open space and their tree protection, to see if we're in line with what they recommended. We are so fortunate to have that kind of expertise in this area.
More than our fresh air.
Yep.
They loved it.
We didn't really thoroughly, because once open space is gone, there's nothing to get back to that. It's more difficult to do it that way.
Remember, too, that we heard from the Hall of Assembly, and that they were urging us to take a project, to focus around the generalists, and I made a note in our form for open space that we have not done that in any way, shape, but I agree. I was not, I don't know that I fully studied the Southwest Shores at all.
We also had consulted the main recommendations. It's really interesting to always think that. We definitely did. We helped with it. We think the Southwest Shore Assessment, Conservation Committee recommendations, we have those documents.
Yeah, I do know that Southwest Shore Assessment, that document, is referenced in the Small Area Plan that we received and not under review. And I know that that's part of Chuck's presentation of how they're addressing that. While it may not be an element, it's part of their thinking, and it could be part of their presentation that you might see. And from that presentation, and from the Small Area Plan, which we can review in concert with all these documents, maybe there's aspects of that that could be put into the element and not wait for the Small Area Plan. It not only covers, Southwest Shore covers not only the North Village, but the Small Area Plan, as it covers all of Chatham Park. So I encourage you to look at that and how Chatham Park is telling the town that they're recognizing the Southwest Shore Area Plan and how they're bringing.
It's one thing to say you recognize it, and another to actually put it into action.
Well, but I think the Small Area Plan tries to do that. So look at that and ask the applicant how they're working with that.
I want to make sure we have connectivity, because I think that's really vital to have.
Right.
We want to have these little islands of, but if there's not some connectivity, of course, the stream boppers do provide those out, just to make sure of having an overall plan and how it's going to happen.
Yeah, and if you don't find something like ephemeral streams in open space, you might find that in stormwater, as that's an element in the toolbox that they could utilize to lift their property if they have to do so because of the purpose surface and things like that. So what you could do is come up with a list of, hey, I can't find this, and staff or the applicant can walk you through how they're addressing Southwest Shore Plan, how ephemeral streams are thought about and how they're discussed. And one, just to say, well, it's in there, but maybe you all might find that satisfactory, or it's not. And in the case of the Small Area Plan, maybe it's something of that aspect that needs to be pulled over to the element that the applicant, yeah, we can do that. Have thought of it that way, instead of waiting to the Small Area Plan, because we remember, they're all supposed to talk to each other, and the Small Area Plan is supposed to listen to the master plan and the elements, and then the Small Area Plan comes in, and then Site Plan and Subdivision listens to all of them. Some of the things that they're telling the town of how they're handling questions that you all have on preservation of trees and natural resources and Southwest Shore that might be in the Small Area Plan that we just haven't referenced because it's just not in the review process right now. We all have it, and we should utilize it as a tool of how they're telling the town. Even though it's not under review, it is their way of trying to tell us what's up and coming. And when we get to these types of elements, particularly this set, I think you can pull things from the Small Area Plan that might apply in the element. So I suggested some time ago about workshop, y'all might want to consider that again. I know July was busy for everybody, so we didn't really get that fit in. We have next Monday open. We could definitely do, that's the third Monday of the month, if y'all have availability, I would have availability. We can have the applicant see if they have availability, or we could find another time, because I believe some of these topics, just like, where is the ephemeral streams talked about? Well, the applicant can pull that right up. And certainly, we could do that tonight, and they could go through that, but I want y'all to be able to have your talking points and your thoughts together before you ask the questions, and be ready to have the applicant answer those questions. It's totally up to you all, though, the applicant's here, they're ready to go, but if you find the fit into taking another week or so at it and having the workshop with me, just blurt out, how is this being handled? And if they can't answer the question, then that's where we need to have that discussion of, well, why not? Why isn't it being considered? Well, it's not even considered, but this is the alternative to that, and that's where they could.
Would it be something we'd also, please, plus on the Conservation Committee, that they can also provide input?
Well, they have provided input through the process.
So to answer the questions that we might have?
Okay, so to have them at the table to answer questions about certain aspects of conservation, or is it related to Chatham Park?
Freeze is behind your comments.
Not at all in priority, they might not be able to use everything you want, but what's important, what will have to be is environmental input. I know we're talking at some, but, you know, things have changed a lot since they originally started making recommendations, but to give their input, I would have complete confidence that what we're doing is the right thing. And it would be helpful to have people within this committee also to take more of it.
I agree. And I appreciate you suggesting a week from today, but that's a.
Well, now that we're including other community organizations that I have no control over, I'm not.
It's just one, it's just one Conservation Committee, maybe just been one or two people, because they really do get a lot of work, very organized, it's done by priority, right?
And I would preference any of that discussion on read your U D O draft as well, because what's in the draft is different than what they presented to us back in 2015, because there are things that we, the staff, feel like we just can't put forth because it's just not legal. And we can have that discussion, we're going to have that discussion during the U D O process. But again, there's another document for you to reference when it goes to the natural resources conservation, is that what was put forth by the committee is not necessarily going to be verbatim in the U D O. And if we're not going to put it in the U D O, we probably should just go ahead and agree that those things aren't going to be things that we're going to talk about with Chatham Park. And we can expand on that, of why staff feels like certain hierarchy of ranking of resources isn't something that we're going to, in the draft, move forward with.
This is sounding like a pretty substantial session.
Yeah.
All four. And Mr. Blas, I agree that these four elements are intertwined, and it's important to really thorough through all of them. With that said, I was able to get through three of them, two and a half. I've not been able to really understand the stormwater. I've read through the elements, it makes reference to three or four other documents. I've got to go get familiar with those again, so that I understand what this element's actually saying. But I think we should, if we are able, to spend some time tonight and offer any comments that we have on any of the elements and get some feedback. I know Chuck's probably eager to answer questions.
Yes.
Respond. So if anyone's prepared with any comments, I think we start long rolling on this one. All right.
All right. Do you want to have Chuck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I was going to suggest a couple of things previously. One was to try, we've responded to the Additional Elements Committee, their comments in writing, we responded to public hearing comments in writing, and we responded to staff comments in writing. So I'm expecting to get your comments, just like we did last time, I'm expecting to get your comments, we'll respond to those in writing. So I don't begin to think, particularly after listening, that we're going to get all those tonight, but we can get some of them. What I'm probably going to do, though, is I'm going to get them all and respond one time and get them back to you, so we don't, last time, I think it was confusing because we had version after version after version of elements that got very confusing on which one we were actually looking at and supposed to be considering, so I'd rather do that one time. Secondly, I do think, understanding it can't be next Monday night, probably, but I do think a workshop would be worthwhile, because it's difficult to have a dialogue in this situation, and I think that's what we need to have. It's not that we're all going to agree, we're all going to disagree, but we need to have a conversation, which I think really helps get to that point. And I agree with, I mean, I know many of your comments come from Catherine Dinerger and those people, and we've responded to a lot of that, but still, there's some things that would help if we just were sitting down and spending some time on it, whether that's, you know, a week from now, or three weeks from now, two weeks from now, whatever, whenever we can do that, we need to do it as soon as possible. Second, about the Southwest Shore Assessment, I've mentioned this a number of times standing here, that we have provided answers for every recommendation that was made in the Southwest Shore Assessment there in the Small Area Plan. The reason they're in the Small Area Plan is because many of them are not recommendations that you deal with in an element. It'll suggest something about, you need a greenway plan. And the element says we have a greenway plan, but then we provide a greenway plan in the Small Area Plan, just to thwart the area. We can't do that for the entire Chatham Park yet. It wants buffers along game lands that are south. By the time we develop 30 years from now in the south, that situation is going to be so different that whatever answer we give there, if we put it in the element, it doesn't make sense. So we said we'd be dealing with those in the Small Area Plan. So that's why we've been dealing with the answers in the Small Area Plan. And again, the towns have that information, whether you've got the Small Area Plan or I don't know, but it's very specifically laid out in there, answering every one of the recommendations in the Southwest Shore Assessment, if you need that, to be able to make an evaluation of these elements. So the information's there, and I think, but at the same time, you've got a stack of information like that, and I get it, that it's difficult to really kind of pick and choose what you should be looking at. And so I think a workshop where, you know, you ask that question, and I point you to page 17 of some document, I think is going to be more helpful than me just kind of off the cuff answering things and you not having that document in front of you to verify what I'm saying. And so I think that would be the best thing we could do. Secondly, since the last time, you know, we did this, I think, June 12, so it's not like this information just came to you four days ago, it's been there for a few months. But at the same time, the stormwater element was, the ranking system and that sort of thing came in right at that month, so you didn't have that. And we're prepared to give you that presentation tonight on exactly what the stormwater element was about, what we, the presentation we gave to the Planning Board. So that would be something that would be, that would move that element along, and this information you haven't been privy to. So I think that's another suggestion of what could happen tonight. But I do think we, you know, the workshop would be the best thing we could do. Now, I will agree with Mr. Bonnet's that, you know, if anything happened tonight, that there's virtually nothing in the general provisions that hasn't been there since May of last year. And the landscape element, I think, was generally accepted by all the groups without much comment. There were a few things that we've done, like add resources for pollinators and native plants and things like that, but it's generally in the same board as well. So, I mean, it's like a lot of these elements, some we need more time on, some are really ready to go, others, we need some other documents that might be good to have in front of you while we're talking about them, so a workshop may apply to those. So I think they're all at different levels of readiness, I guess, for your review. So if we did anything, I think someone would learn to help you tonight, other than that, I think setting a time for a workshop.
The board's like, do you have a stormwater presentation?
Yes. Yeah. Great.
Do you still have? Jeff?
What's that?
Do you still have?
Oh. Yeah.
I didn't bring this. I'm looking for it. Oh. Good evening. I'm Peter Freeman with Weather Draven elements, and I am also the stormwater administrator for Chatham Park, which is one of the roles spelled out in the element. So to quickly go through this and just hit on some highlights, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have. The element was rewritten, edited many times, based on feedback from Planning Board and lengthy discussions with staff in many meetings with the Royal and Jones and others to get really down to the crux of what needs to be in it, what are the critical pieces of this element, to really achieve the town's objective, which is summarized best in the master plan, in that Chatham Park made a commitment to a community of exceptional design character that preserves and protects critical environmental resources. So that was the statement that was really the founding, or the foundation of the element that you now have in front of you, as well as the design manual, which is the additional document. And there was intentional thought put into what goes into the design manual versus what's in the element. So just going through the highlights of that very briefly, the element does attempt to codify the roles and responsibilities of what Chatham Park itself is handling, and what are the responsibilities of the town in its relationship with Chatham Park, specifically towards the design of projects and developments. It does restate the five commitments we made in the master plan regarding peak flow, water quality, total suspended zones, the nitrogen commitment, as well as the commitment to maintain the devices in perfectivity. So those were restated at the front. And then the roles and responsibilities talk about how Chatham Park will be the responsible party that the town has. the responsible party that the town has one point of contact, so the town is not having to chase down thousands of property owners that will eventually be developing in Chatham Park and all of the stormwater BNP's that go with those developments. That Chatham Park will maintain those, uh, and have an annual report to the town, and then that relationship just works with it at one point of contact. So that the, the level of maintenance, the level of inspection does not vary. It, it, it meets the town standards, it's consistent with any, any other property in the town, but it just gives the town one point of contact with Chatham Park to, uh, come, come handle this. So, uh, that handles, or that covers the maintenance and responsibilities section. Uh, again, getting to the, the question and the challenge that was posed in the initial versions of the element, that's to show us how you're going, and, and show us how you're exceptional, which is a commitment that was made in, in the, uh, master plan. That section is in the design manual. And, uh, what we've included now in the design manual is a stormwater exceptional design ranking system, which has, uh, I believe 27 categories in it now, uh, all aimed at providing an actual real benefit to the streams and water bodies, both within the Chatham Park boundary as well as obviously downstream, going into Jordan Lake and the Haw River. So, that was our founding goal and principle, was what can we do within Chatham Park to protect the waters within us and, and downstream of us. Uh, so there, that was the foundation for figuring out what, what 27 categories are included in there. And it ranges from, uh, essentially the, sorry to step back a step, would be, there's a point total, 120 points is our committed score that we will hit. Uh, and, and each of the 27 categories is weighted against each other to, you know, some are worth more than others. For instance, protection of existing stream channels. If we can limit the length of feet that we impact of the channel, a project or watershed would score higher, uh, than, than a project with significant stream impacts. Stream value is, is much higher, there, I believe there are 20-something points, 28 points available for stream health. We also have, just to name a couple of categories, you know, some therefore construction site controls, and using double silt masks to prevent sediment from leaving sites. That category is worth up to three points. So, it's weighted, we'd much rather protect the streams, uh, but, but we have other tools available to us. So, there's a whole ranking system there. Again, 120 points being the total, that's, that's our target. Uh, and we've done case studies, and we've worked with town staff to come up with these points. Uh, and the, the Chatham Park commitment is 120 points, and we ran a typical town in Pittsburgh project that would score around 100 on average. So, that 20% increase in, in point total, and I know we'll get into this in the work session in more detail, uh, is, is how we're quantifying exceptional development. So, federal channels, to your point, Ms. Mayor, is one of those categories in which if the opportunity is there to protect those, there are points available to be scored. Although, federal channels are not a mandated protected environmental feature, whereas intermittent channels, perennial channels are, have a protection within the master plan. So, uh, there's a lot to look at in the, in the, uh, design manual especially. Uh, the element is, is more of the, the codified, you know, uh, just, just setting what our performance criteria will be, how we get there, and what projects will look like, is more in the design manual. So, uh, that's, that's a quick summary of what is in front of you for documentation on the stormwater side. It does tie to other elements. Plantings are one of our categories in which we can earn points, and those are, yes, they're part of the landscape element, but they're also tied to the stormwater element, so you're absolutely correct. Uh, and with that very quick, brief walkthrough, without actually going through the details of it, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. If there's specific items about the operation of the stormwater program in the Chatham Park or with that ranking system or design specific, if you have any questions.
I should have throughed the manual, so...
It, it took a lot of work.
I, yeah. Actually, I think I made it to page three. Uh, so, um, so that throughed the, the stormwater element, um, and asked the comments and asked some questions. Um, on the introduction, the first steps, um, it seems to me that, after the word standards, very present to stop right there, and then we could strike that established by the town's adoption of the master plan to the extent of the town's authority, seems to be its purpose.
The specific reason for that is there have been, since the adoption of the master plan and development of the master plan, there have been state rules.
Right.
Through the budget and other state administration rules, which prevents the town from enforcing some of these elements. And... And that's, that's what that statement goes?
It will be stated in the element that Chatham Park is committing to do these things, even though the state is saying, "Town, you can't do this." I don't want to make reference to a statement that says, "To the extent the town can't do this." Um, when we've spoken before, if you guys stood fast to this, that we're doing this, I don't care what the state says, I would like it just to be, we're going to do this.
Period. We'll, we'll have to discuss that.
Yeah.
You know, from a legal standpoint, involved with the town attorney into, can, can we write that?
I, yeah.
And there's the laws of information, right? Are you? Are you law?
Yeah, that was, that was the reason why we added to the town's ability to enforce it. Because the current state law says, and it, it does say, "You shall not enforce nutrient, nutrient regulations, even if it's a committed element by a current..."
It is voluntary.
So, how do we promise to do something with no enforcement mechanism behind it? And I think it's the challenge that we raised.
Well, I've been very, very happy that there has, this is the first whip I've heard of that as being acknowledged situation. Um, the main, the, the element also says, because one of the questions I had was, you know, we've got our own design manuals, they have their own design manuals. And I think it goes, it's very specific in the language that it uses to say, "These are different design manuals, this ours, Chatham Park's."
Yep.
And, "Now, Pittsburgh's design is distinctly different."
That's correct.
But then it says that the design manual incorporates the town and the state design manuals. So does that mean that the Chatham Park design manual meets the minimum criteria of both those other manuals?
Uh, I would say it's, it's semantically other than whether it's that relationship or whether it's the reverse relationship. Where technology that, that device is used, stormwater controls used within Chatham Park will be designed to one of those standards. If it's an approved standard in the town design manual or the state's design manual, it's a device. It's designed to that standard.
Would you be limited to those?
We are, we have also included where, with, with town approval, or in the case of Chatham Park, where it's an NCDOT-approved roadway, the, the ability to use NCDOT standards in that situation, or with, with approval from the town engineer, the ability to use stormwater BNP's that are not listed in the state or current town design manuals. And those would be, those are included, the ones we've developed to this point, the stormwater tree wells, those details are included in our design manual.
And by the word incorporates, does that also mean that the Chatham Park design manual updates when these other documents update?
We'll use the most recent version of those applicable manuals.
Yep. Um, the other, like, um, the other question I have, have to do with the, um, security and the maintenance obligations of the property owners association. It says that each BMP will provide funding, I think it's 15% of the actual funding cost.
That's correct.
And it will do that within five years, or on the fifth year after the year it goes into service. And the question I have is, um, I know we're at the beginning, so how does the POA make a major repair in that five-year window before the money is in place? I mean, I, I know you're calculating that it'll be rare, that a major repair's going to be required in that first five years, but when it does happen, where's the money coming from?
So the, there, there, one of the revisions to the element that was made and changed from the master plan, just to, to go back one level in this hierarchy, the master plan said that there would be individual escrow accounts for each BMP within Chatham Park. We, with, with discussion with the town attorney and staff, we revised that to say there will be one escrow account for all of Chatham Park, so that they pool of money that can be used for repair and replacement of any BMP within Chatham Park, and it's an internal process with the association to recoup those funds and replenish the overall master plan. So, the idea being, uh, yes, initially, there would be developer contributions that would be needed if a major repair is needed today, for instance.
So, in this period of time, when you're just getting started, I think it's, will be ceding that fund?
Well, we'll discuss how that, whether, how that mechanism will happen.
It, it also mentioned the assessments that would be required and suggested that, um, there were some folks who might be exempt from those exceptions, from the assessments.
Do you have a page number reference, so I understand where, where you're looking?
Yeah. Uh, page seven. And at the very, very end of that, um, paragraph, exception to, unless otherwise exempt from pain of assessments under, after all restricted covines.
Well, I'll have to look into that after we respond to that one.
Well, and I thought, well, the town surely should be one of those parties that should be exempt from such things. Um, I, I'll have to say that I would read one paragraph, and I would write a question, and the next paragraph would answer that question, which was comforting. Yes. No, it was great. Um, and I think in the maintenance reports, Chatham Park will be provided to the town, and reports on the staff's of the escrow account, expenditure, all of those kinds of things, um, I think it would also be good to have a tracking mechanism of one BMP comes online, another pain was due, and, and as a component of that, um, report, um, you know, I, we'll address and think that there are many, many reports. I know that we've got a bunch of the town, how much urban services been constructed, how much tree coverage is there, how much open space, and how much space. So all these reports, you know, are critical to be tracked, obviously to make sure we're meeting the standards, and I would find additional elements, all of them. The last sentence in the paragraph above purpose, I think we're looking for the known, goes to the noun.
What's that?
Go ahead. It made, uh, peak flow attenuation is talking about these points of interest, and that they are regional in character?
That's correct.
And not, so not individual lots?
It can be meant on an individual lot basis, but it's also, and we set this up in the master plan, it gives us freedom to do it on a more big watershed basis, if there's an opportunity for a regional device, or...
Okay, so would the point of interest in a regional location then fall to a regional device?
Not necessarily.
Right, so you could still have...
It could be a series of individual devices.
So, on that particular site, then you might exceed the, the peak discharge?
That's correct.
As long as you don't in the regional location. And how does, how do you go about deciding if that's appropriate or not? Is the town involved in that?
So there, there are, there are levels of compliance, or there are intermediate compliance points, or certain parts of the source, um, and, and also the, the town's minimum standards, which we exceed. So, for instance, at the point where stormwater crosses into a buffer feature, where it hits that buffer line, we are required to attenuate the one-year storm. But, we are opening it up in this element to say the larger floods, 2, 5, and 10, that we've also committed to, in some, in some segments, maybe higher at, at individual points in, in a stream, but then attenuated further downstream before that water leaves the Chatham Park boundary. So yes, uh, there may be very small segments, but it's going to be a rare instance. Really, that buffer, that point where water crosses the buffer will be our compliance point, just whatever.
Um, it talks about the watershed map, did you have that?
It's attached in the design manual.
Oh, it's in the manual?
It is in the manual, with little points identified for the northern section of Chatham Park.
Okay.
Or at least the, the current points. And the intent of the design manual is that that can change more fluidly than revisiting this element, or changes that map, but approved by the town engineer.
On page seven, elements to address operations of any small type BMP in Chatham Park, should be amended at that time, free upon by POA and the town engineer, and I would like to try to get your...
Okay.
Well, you're looking at the POA, you talked about the... Brad, I think you've been integrated involved with this manual, is that right?
Yeah. Well, we've had probably four meetings over the last six months.
Yeah. Brad, I mean, it sounds like a novel approach, or at least distinguished approach. How do you feel about it?
Um, so far, so good. Um, I wrote them some ideas, and they incorporated most of them. Um, I'm all about kind of thinking outside of the box in stormwater for, it's called non-structural BNP's.
It's a little bit of a box.
It's a bubble.
Yeah.
So, we came up with all these menu items of non-structural BNP's, like what you've heard tonight. heard tonight, tree preservation's another one, if you're in old buffers is another one, soil amendments, doing better job during construction, because we know that's a big problem, so we came up with some distinct items you can score to do a better job during As an example, the manual we go with is a fourteen-day coverage period for soil, well, there's, we have that to seven days, they could choose that and get a couple of three points or whatever it is for that. It raises the bar, in my view, to look at holistic watersheds and not just, we've got to build this dang hole in the ground. And to do more weaving, tying it together with open space and tree protection, to the extent it's doable, and that it makes sense. We all know that if you leave the trees alone in some areas, it's, that does the stormwater work for you, and so we should get credit for that. You know, so, yeah. It's a difficult way to look at it, because it's not just engineering numbers and, you know, building things that meet this criteria and move on, it's looking at more of a balanced approach, and for water quality.
Fred, I have one question. You're talking about this score, and I know that you don't want to, but, like, our town scores like one hundred, and they're, they're going to try to score one twenty, am I getting this right?
Yeah, that's right. That's a, that's based on a couple pilot projects.
Credit for eight?
Yeah, so, so they'd be, they're presenting something that they would minimum have to hit one twenty, when ordinarily, using our rules, you might hit a hundred. So, that's the, that's the exceptional, a way, a way to measure what exceptional means. We had to figure out, how do you measure what exceptional means? This is just about stormwater at this point, it's not about anything else.
Right. Has, has, I was reminded earlier, the county's comments on the additional elements touched on stormwater element in particular, because they're concerned that laws will change, and have, has the county had opportunity to review this masterful piece of work?
I don't, I haven't presented it to them personally, we probably would, the answer's probably no, unless they've read it online somewhere. There's no harm in it.
They don't enforce the stormwater...
Oh, I understand, but they're...
They all changes, they have to meet state law. That's a comment from Chatham County, but that's understood. That, that, if anything, state changes something that we all have to do, they have to do it. That's pretty standard.
Well, I just, you know, they're, they're neighbors, and they're also in the city business, Fred, and...
Yes, sure.
I'd be curious to hear their specific detail thoughts, now that it's reached this level of maturity, that now that we have a really polished product, this manual is impressive, and, and I would just like to hear their, their most recent thoughts.
Be glad to get it to them.
Cool. Tom, were you, were you hoping to get a report?
Sure, if they're willing to put something right, that'd be great, but, is it something you require?
This may be a, a question that shows my ignorance, based on the fact that I'm not an engineer or expert in stormwater, but almost all of these structures are going to stay within the maintenance and control of Chatham Park, and, and the one, the one source, go-to person.
Yes.
But there was language in here about what was, about sending things over to the town. Is the town anticipating any kind of sharing, or is it all going to stay with the jurisdiction?
I don't believe so at this point. I believe the institute working assumption for, for Chatham Park is that all, all the stormwater BNP's within Chatham Park will be the responsibility of Chatham Park.
And that certainly should be the town's perspective, too.
Yeah, that's why I believe that.
But there was a teaching, I'm sure, that the town...
Yeah, it was on page five, maintenance went six, and let's accept for maintenance by the town of Pittsburgh or other...
We're not anticipating that the town will accept maintenance. But it just leaves it all open for that, if laws change, or for whatever reason, you feel the need to take over for the residential association at its charge.
Ken Eagle, Chatham Park. Correct, what he just said, we don't know what could happen in the future, some towns have become more interested in taking over managing stormwater and charging fees for it, and that could happen in the town of Pittsburgh or down the road. Now, we know you don't do that, we fully anticipate the property owners association will be doing it, but we just put that in there just to allow for the possibility that sometime in the future that could happen.
Thank you, Chuck. I don't know, this is not the manual, or the, what the elements, that helps, helps the law, and what we can remain in contact to the work session. Thank you, Chuck.
One question, last time the work session was scheduled outside of our attendance, is it possible to try to figure out something now with everyone's schedules, just to make sure we can be there?
Well, that, I hate to say it, I would really like to do it Saturday, where we can start early and get it going. Well, I know in the past that the board of this board is taking off for, for work day as well. So, take a nighttime meeting, go do it, I don't think we're going to have the energy, I don't think we're going to have the, I guess that's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for, to really dig in, and also, you know, get to eight o'clock at night, and, and be tired.
And most everybody worked all day, except those two of us that are retired, Jay.
Right. By Monday afternoon.
Doesn't mean he's been sitting on the, so he's eating bonbons all day, but, um...
You're favoring the Monday afternoon?
Yes, sir. You can do some earlier.
That'll give us the time we need to really dig in. That's what I, I hear we need, because it is really late. It'll be good to get into this.
Are the county boards doing about, about leg day? Will they be meeting?
For six.
For six?
Yes.
That's for you, Monday afternoon session.
Yeah. There's a lot to talk about. I'm charged now, but you can't, you can't hear.
Got it.
Um...
Are you in the twenty-fourth?
There's a twenty-fourth, what, you're, you're...
Uh, yeah.
Jeff Jones?
I have meetings, but I can overlook that. Morning starts, what we're talking about?
Yeah. Page one-sixty-three. Ah, I can't, I can't do that, I can't do that. I'm going to work that, I'm not going to...
We're trying to watch each other.
What day is it?
You know, me neither.
Okay, well, this is work in... Seven?
In seven?
I'll be out of state then.
You're running the fourth, is that correct? And everybody's off, says you can't work here, um, fourteen? Fourteen?
All right, could you do the fourteenth? Talking about September fourteenth?
What time? Yeah.
I can't do the fourteenth. I'm, I'm, I don't know.
I lose a lot of power, we drag this, I would rather go ahead and put a sooner work session off.
It's a meeting.
I'd rather get to sooner, earlier work, not earlier than David sooner, than to drag it on into September.
Well, I know, we're running into... Seventeen, what's this, we're saying?
And, and we have to, we need more time to read.
To plan, to read.
We're available to do it twice, I mean, if, if half of the board can do it one time, and half of the board can do it another time. I understand, but right now, we're getting towards October.
Oh, that was from fourteen, from, oh, that's on... And clicks?
Yeah, yeah, that's a once-in-time opportunity, my children, I dare experience that, once in a lifetime, I love the community, sometimes I'm sorry, Chris, but, no.
If we had teleporter technology, I could get back in time for you to meet, but, we're not exactly sure that we're going to be in the zone of technology, yes, no?
September, September fourteenth.
Is it, is it, are we done with point first? September? Can I hear you back, but, what we can help it?
Chuck, was that the one you said you were going to do in Ireland?
No, fourteen. Yes, it took a while.
That's a work session, we're looking at all three addresses.
Monday's a better day for it. As far as, I can, pass the time off.
We'll start as early as we can, um...
Nine twenty-one. Does that work? Does that work? I can do it.
James, bring breakfast.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Let me check reality out.
What time is it? Eight thirty? Eight thirty?
Yeah, it's got to be eight thirty.
Eight, eight thirty in the morning.
All right, and we're covering four. I want to call five. We're going to put it down, yeah.
We can do it in our media, right? We can do it in our media, right?
Well, well, oil.
That's what I was thinking. Since this is our place, we'll take care of it, you don't have to worry about a check, Jay.
Ms. Alice, can we handle a public documentation recording at their facility?
At their facility?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm sure we can use the portable.
What is the name of the location and map coordinates?
Fifty-five Grant Avenue is the address of Chatham Park.
Well, um, we, I think what we've done this evening is good, and it would set the work session and, and gotten through some questions on one of the tougher elements, and, so I'm thinking that, that we may have done what we can do tonight.
Going to go ahead and set the date for the third elements work session? If we wait until then, it's going to be, I mean, it's a way to get it out there. And I realize, I think affordable, I think, I could be wrong, but I think affordable housing is going to be something that extends longer than, but I think the other, I would agree, I think these four are the most difficult, and I think the three, three of the four are not that difficult, other than affordable housing for us to get through.
Okay, so shall we go back to our gentleman, looking to see what we can do for a work session in, in early October, and then about October five? Or we could do many, actually, that would be the, that would be the plan, Chuck.
You mentioned that we never, we never talked about August thirty-first as a date?
Well, I heard, yeah, we did.
Oh, that's right, you said she was, she was gone, is that right?
Yes.
So, what you said, October fifth?
So, thank, okay. Do we, are we required to send, make those, those, no?
No, this is the Altona in the office meeting, we're writing a meeting, I'll just post it and put it on the website.
That, that try to help teach your element? Considering the late hour, Mr. Gruesbeck, do you have a problem with giving the, giving the, um, management reports? Does the board wish to have the, do the, their concerns, or intend at eleven o'clock when we are, if you know?
Just skip both of them, and you can just forward your concerns.
Okay, very good.
I do want to stress, Mr. Gruesbeck, appreciation for your forward-looking...
Or we could do many, actually, that would be the, that would be the primary program. You in town, if you want to?
You mentioned that we never, we never talked about August 31st as a date.
Well, I heard, yeah, we did.
Oh, that's right. You said she was, she was gone. Is that right?
Yes.
So, what you said, October 5th?
So, thank you, okay. Do we, are we required to send, to make notes? It is here, no?
This is the alternate in the orchestrating for regular meeting. I'll just post it and put it on the website.
That, that kind of secret element? Considering the late hour, Mr. Grusbeck, do you have a problem with giving the management reports? Does the board wish to have, to, to, to their concerns or intend at 11 o'clock, we are, we should know?
Just skip both of them. You can just forward your concerns.
Okay.
I do want to express Mr. Grusbeck's appreciation for your forward-looking perspective at this past and really glad to see this again. And that there's so very helpful to me. I feel like we've got so much on our plates these days, is all of our bleary eyes is testimony tonight and staying here so late. It would be really helpful to have this continue and maybe even expand to four meeting dates to the extent that your crystal ball can look forward that far. I think as much as we've got, that we're going to need to start planning some, some of these things a month out, two, well, two months out.
Yeah, well, that, those schedules are certainly going to be your legacy if you do anything that you've done. That's, that's one big thing. But the fourth week probably is going to be, the crystal balls will be blank.
Glory.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in cases especially like August 28th, September 11th, we're already filling those naps, so...
Yeah, you know, and then granted too, some of these things are going to change from week to week. So, as long as people realize that this is more of a fluid, a fluid table than it is something that's set in stone.
Yep. I think we've always recognized that it's fluid and yet also still appreciate it that it's an idea, gives us a heads up.
I think now too, the mayor's backing better than ever. That's going to be, that's going to know too. There was kind of some concern about what we were going to talk about when, and so I think we're back with Nadia Keeler as well.
Do we have a motion to adjourn and that?
So, who?
Motion made by John Glass, seconded by Henry Walton. I have one quick question. Somebody contacted me about what they said they do.